Manager Mike test one, two, three. Manager Mike, check one, two, three. County Clerk, mic check one, two, three. County Clerk, mic test one, two, three. Attorney Mike, testing one, two, three. Attorney Mike, check one, two, three. Meitzner Mike, testing one, two, three. Meitzner Mike, check one, two, three. Dennis Mike, testing one, two, three. Dennis Mike, check one, two, three. Beatty Mike, testing one, two, three. Beatty Mike, check one, two, three. Lopez, mic check one, two, three. Lopez, mic test, or testing one, two, three. Howe Mike, testing, whoops. Howe Mike, testing one, two, three. Howe Mike, test one, two, three. Podium Mike, testing one, two, three. Podium Mike, test one, two, three.
Thirty seconds, stand by. Fifteen seconds. Here we go, ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five.
Well, good morning, welcome to this morning's Board of County Commission meeting. Want to, want to welcome those that are in person today, those that are also viewing online, on social media, or on KPTS. Also like to make a special welcome to the people, the great city of Goddard. When a bell rings, an angel gets its wings, have you heard that? We have some special guests today from the city of Goddard. Want to welcome Mayor George Leebie and George Leeb. I know a lot of Leebies, George Leeb, and then City Administrator Craig Crossitt. So, welcome, we're glad you guys are joining us this morning from District Three. So, welcome. So, let's call this meeting to order for Wednesday, March twentieth, twenty twenty-four. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Invocation to be led by Pastor Emmanuel Miranda with Praise Chapel. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Good morning. First of all, let's give God all His glory for who He is. It's an honor and privilege to be here this morning. My name is Pastor Emmanuel Miranda with Praise Chapel Derby. Let's just take a moment and to enter into His holy presence. John three sixteen says, "For God so loved the world, that He gave His only Son, that whoever believes in Him should not perish, but have eternal life." See, God loved us so much that He didn't want us to die in our sins. He paid in full at the cross so that we could live eternally with Him. So, there is hope for you today. There is hope for our nation. There is hope for our state. There is hope for our city, and there's hope for our families, and there is hope for you. Second Chronicles seven fourteen, it says, "If my people who are called by my name would humble themselves, and pray and seek my face, and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven, and I will forgive their sin, and heal their land." He came once, and we need to be ready because He will be coming back again. Lord, we thank You for every single person in this room, that Your presence would be with them today and always. We bless Your name this morning, and we give You all the glory, in the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Miranda from Praise Chapel, thank you, sir, for being here today. Yeah, Commissioner Howe.
Just wanted to also say thank you for being here. Derby's on fire, bringing in these great pastors. Thank you for being here. Emmanuel's, Manny's Church is a brand-new startup, and it's doing great. And you're a wonderful preacher and a really caring person for our community. So, thank you so much for what you do for our community, and I am a thousand percent behind you, buddy. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howe.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item.
County announcements.
Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners, Nicole Kibbs of Strategic Communications. March is Women's History Month, commemorating the remarkable contributions of women throughout the American history. The vision and accomplishments of influential women have expanded the horizons of opportunity for everyone. We've crafted a brief video showcasing just a handful of the exceptional women who are part of Sedgwick County, tirelessly working towards a brighter future for our community.
From what I can understand from the history here, I am the first emergency management female director here, and I take that with a lot of pride. I've been very fortunate, I've always had a lot of support.
I love my job, I would never give this up. I think this is the best job ever. The elements, and being outside, the guys are really nice to work with, they're not, they don't baby me, and I love that.
I've never really felt like, even though I'm the only woman in this role, that it really has held me back or affected me. The people I work with, it's a great work environment, I, I love coming to work every day.
I think it's important for women today to know that women is a very broad spectrum, and it could also include, like, beautiful supermodels succeeding and being beautiful. It could also include weird bald gremlins that collect lizards and work at the coroner's office, like myself. You can be the best woman you can be by being yourself.
There's work Chloe, and then there's not-at-work Chloe, and those are two very different people. At work, I like to try and be really collaborative, but if I'm doing hobbies and stuff like that, I do try to really want to win.
All women can do whatever they put their mind to. It doesn't matter who you are, what age you are, or what race you are, you can do it.
Although we're, we've come a really long way, there's still a long way to go. We have a lot of really great leadership that are women, and a lot of great moves that are in the county, and I think that it's really important to make sure we not only keep that, but move forward with it.
I think women really need to find a way to lift up and support other women.
My biggest advice is don't just show up at the table, speak up at the table.
All right, as we near the conclusion of the inaugural I Voted sticker design competition, hosted by Sedgwick County Election Office, students in grades six through twelve still have a chance to participate. The winning design will become the official I Voted sticker for Sedgwick County, distributed to thousands of voters at polling locations with advance ballots throughout the 2024 electoral period. Don't miss your opportunity to submit an entry before the deadline, March twenty-ninth. Visit sedgwickcounty.org/elections to access the entry form and template. All right, for county good news, we have two, I'd like to introduce two employees recently honored by the Business Journal. First, up I will have Sinali Kuliker, the Epidemiologist and Surveillance Coordinator for the Health Department. She was named one of the 2024 Healthcare Heroes. These heroes are usually individuals, companies, or organizations honored by their contributions to improving healthcare in Wichita and the surrounding area. Sinali, if you'd like to make a few comments?
Thanks, Nicole. Good morning, everyone, good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Adrian and Katie. I feel so blessed and incredible, it's an incredible honor for me to be chosen as Healthcare Hero for 2024, especially for the community outreach. I've been working for the Sedgwick County for the last seven years, and got a, this is, I think, I'm so grateful for Sedgwick County to give me this opportunity to work for different community organizations, for underserved and underprivileged communities and groups in our community. This is, I'm so blessed, and thank you, everybody. Thank you, Sedgwick County, thank you, communities, to give me this opportunity to work for our, our communities again. Thanks.
Next is Catherine Helms, she is the Project Manager for IT. Catherine was named a 2024 Young Professional in Technology, which honors tech professionals who are the next generation of city and community leaders. She's here with us today, and her supervisor Greg has a few words he'd like to say.
Thank you, Nicole. Good morning, Commission. Good morning, audience, thank you very much. I'm Greg Gann, I'm the IT Business Solutions Group Director, and I lead a very talented group of professionals, but to hear today is, is one of my favorites. Catherine Helms started with us four years ago, and through that time Catherine has been a proven leader, time and time again, on projects like FIRE, RMS, the Records Management System. During the COVID, she was a big part of organizing the health effort downtown at the Old Library, Athena RMS, the CAD RMS JMS Project for Emergency Communications, and the Sheriff's Office, the Appraiser Smart File that just went live. I could go on and say how, how proud I am of her, I do that to her all the time, and I'm surprised she doesn't throw things at me, but let me share some words from Colonel Greg Pollak, who last year nominated her for an award that she received, the bronze medal from the Sheriff's Office. These are Colonel Pollak's words. Having a dedicated project manager for any project is a blessing. Having Catherine Helms as your project manager is ten levels above this. Since September of 2021, Catherine has scheduled and conducted hundreds of meetings with the various representatives from our vendor, and always making sure the right people from the county were in the room. She's maintained a punch list of problems and recorded solutions for hundreds of items, working with the various teams she would review and help establish priorities for these items, as well as priorities for the different teams. She has kept the executive team abreast of issues and concerns to enable the executive team to have timely and productive meetings with the vendor. Catherine was new to this area of law enforcement and emergency services prior to being assigned to the project. In addition to learning the various parts of the project, she also took the time and energy to learn about emergency services, how we operate, our priorities, and our language. Over the past year, her dedication to the project and constant drive has helped the overall success of the platform. That's Catherine in a nutshell every single day, and I am honored and proud to have her as a member of our team. Thank you.
Catherine?
Thank you. Yeah, I, we have a really great team in the IT department in, in the county, and I look forward to the next big project. Thank you.
Once again, congratulations to our Business Journal Award winners, and with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions or comments from the Commission? I would also extend, Sinali and Catherine, thank you so much for the work you guys do. We have over twenty-seven hundred employees at Sedgwick County Government, and the work they do is incredibly consequential to this community in a lot of ways, and, and to know that the rest of the community is acknowledging the success you have and how you stand out is, we're proud of you, you're doing great work, and, and thank you so much, congratulations. Anything else from the Commission? Nicole, great job, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of February twenty-first to twenty twenty-four. Item A, regular meeting minutes of February 21st to 2024.
Commissioners, we have all had a chance to review the meeting minutes. Any questions, changes, comments? Signano will make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of February 21st, 2024.
Second.
A motion to second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Proclamations. Item B, proclamation declaring Developmental Disability Awareness Month.
Madam Clerk, hold one second. Did we get out of order here with public agenda?
Good point, Chairman. I think that the public agenda would have been before the minutes, so I would suggest taking that up now.
Okay. Why don't we do that? Why don't we go back, circle back? Why don't you call the public agenda and we'll...
Public agenda.
Okay. That works. So we do have several people that have signed up today for public comment. We appreciate that you're here today and sharing feedback and insight. Couple rules here. You'll be able to come to the podium when I call your name. You'll have three minutes. When you get to the podium, please state your name and address for the record, and our clerk here will hold up a sign when you get about 30 seconds in, and then that thing will beep when you're done. And she's really, really polite, but I'll do my best to remind you that the time is up so we can move forward. So first on the list, my friend, Andrew Crane.
Which I don't need an introduction, don't we? Come on. Good morning, Commissioners. I am here to talk about, there was an article in the Wichita Eagle on state IDs for the blind, and if, if you read that article, it is kind of shocking what they're doing at the state, the State House, and trying to show that we need validation that we're blind and for the disabled community is, is kind of shocking because they're not following ADA guidelines, and it's a federal, it's a federal law, and, and that, and this is one that you guys need to take a look at and then contact the State House and say, what in the heck are you guys doing? And, and that, and the second thing is, I am having a fundraiser car show, April 6, Guiding Paws ICT too, so just invite you guys out to that, and come support a great organization, and support the, the blind community. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Any questions or comments? I will note that Andrew had given us a copy of the article. I'll make sure it's submitted for the record with the rest of public comment. My friend, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next up, I think it's Janice Bradley.
Yeah, I'm going to wait. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, she's medicated.
Good morning, Commissioners. I live at 214 Buckridge Court in Wichita Midtown. So I know that the legislative platform for the county has been passed, but today is kind of a special day, the 20th of March, and today is the first day that the legislature in Kansas is going to have a hearing for Medicaid expansion in, like, four years. And I looked up the county legislative platform, and I know that for many years here, especially with Commissioner Ransow, the platform was opposition to Medicaid expansion, and I just think that's criminal. The county is responsible for public health, and one of the provisions in that 2024 legislative platform is expand the insured, you know, reduce the number of uninsured in Sedgwick County. And how can we do that? It's amazing. We have this Medicaid expansion for so many years, and we are only one of nine states now that refuses. And many other legislators have done this too, but in, in numbers of states, people have the option of ballot initiatives, and many states have expanded Medicaid by the voters. And I'm sure in Kansas, we would do that too, because now it's polled with Fort H State every year, it's up to about 70% of Kansans support Medicaid expansion. So we have working poor who can't afford to, who don't have, make enough money for the marketplace, but they're shut out of, of health insurance. And they work. They just don't make enough money. We have, the ACA requires 30 hours, more than 30 hours to, for larger employees to insure people. There's a lot of small employers who can't do that, who don't do that. So you have employees who, who work 30 hours or less, who don't make enough money, and can't afford medical insurance. I would ask the county on this special day to please reconsider that agenda point on the legislative platform and vote to, to, it's just a simple, it's not going to change ultimately this, but it's going to say Sedgwick County stands for what's right today. We are for public health. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Appreciate your comments. Next up, Jacob Belton.
My name is Jacob Belton. My address is 15710 West Southwest Boulevard, Clearwater, Kansas, 67026. Good morning, Commissioners. I want to thank you for your service and dedication to the community here in our county, and thank you for your time today to listen and to make this forum available. So I would like for you to consider making a resolution to bury the deceased individuals of our county who are currently being stored in a commercial building in South Wichita. During approximately the last 20 years, the county has accumulated approximately 400 urns containing the cremated remains of individuals who have died on the streets or have died without anyone to claim their remains. Prior to the practice of cremating the bodies of individuals in Sedgwick County, it was common practice to bury the bodies at local cemeteries. For some unknown reason, when cremation was initiated, the burial of the deceased ended, and the county started storing the remains in urns at the contract industrial crematory. The Catholic Cemeteries of Wichita have offered to bury and entomb the remains in a mausoleum crypt within the Wichita City limits. The Wichita Diocese has been operating and maintaining cemeteries in Sedgwick County for over 150 years. They are offering to bury the remains of the homeless and abandoned individuals that have died in Sedgwick County at no cost to the county. This includes all of the roughly 400 urns that are already being stored at Preferred Mortuary, and this includes any, any remains going forward, again, at no cost to the county. So the urns will be placed and identified so that retrieval is possible, and if necessary, by the county, and then the county would remain as the next of kin legally in the cemetery's paperwork so that you guys, so that the county would maintain authority and control of the remains if they needed to be retrieved. So it has become common practice within our society and for hundreds of years to bury the dead in cemeteries and in sacred spaces, in a place that has been set apart for peace and quiet, out of respect for our deceased brothers and sisters. Hundreds, and maybe even thousands of generations before us, have made it customary to bury the dead in a respectful manner. So we are asking the county commission to consider making a permanent resolution to reinstate the practice of burying the dead, the practice of our ancestors and our forbearers. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. Thank you for being here today. I wish Dr. Stedman is here, but she's not here this morning, so we can have that conversation offline and talked with her and see what that would look like, but thank you for bringing that. That's a really great idea.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it, and thanks for being here. I know we've discussed this in the past. We probably need to re-energize the manager and the staff to take a look at it again. I know there were a bunch of hurdles that we couldn't get over in the past. We need to take a look at what those hurdles were. I also understand that not only do we have remains, we also have a lot of their personal effects, and I don't know how that we dispose of all those personal effects legally also. So there's a lot of legal things that go into it. I understand your concerns. I'm a Catholic, and I do believe in, in taking care of our folks through eternity, but we have to make sure we do it legally. I just want you to understand that we'll re-energize the staff again on it. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner Howe.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for being here. I just want to say, this is actually a topic that's been talked about in years past. I appreciate the reminder this morning, but we do have, I do believe, believe we have a policy that has, that has, in fact, buried some of these folks over the years. It has been a while, I think. I don't know how often they do that, but there is a, there is a process by which, when they hit a threshold, I believe that there is an action by the county. But in terms of a religious ceremony, I believe there's, there's invitation, I believe, to others as well, not just Catholic, but other faiths to be present at that. I don't know exactly how it's done, but it's not, it doesn't get a lot of fanfare, and it's done very quietly. And the other thing, as I'd say, the reason they're, they're being stored for time is because sometimes the families come back years later, and they want to claim those remains. And so it's out of respect for people, their families, who maybe did not know that the loved one passed, and it takes, we want to make sure we provide adequate ample time for that process to, to happen, so we don't want to be too quick to do it.
Absolutely.
And that's one reason why we actually try to store them for some time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Belton, you and I had spoken, and Commissioner Meitzner and I worked on this issue earlier, probably about 15 months ago.
Yeah.
We kind of sat down and went through some of these things, and appreciate you being here and, and bringing this issue up again. There were a few things that we, some significant bottlenecks that we needed to work through, but, but it's worth working through those things, and it's worth having the conversation. So we appreciate you being here, and we will engage Dr. Stedman again and see what we can, we can work through. So, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Next up, David Saunders. Declined. Okay. Got it. Okay. James Lewis.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is James Lewis. I live at 21424 Southwest County Line Road, Rose Hill. I'm good friends with Jacob. I helped him with this project. I've, in my previous career, I was a theology teacher. I taught social justice, worked with my students, worked with the poor. I know some of these people who were, who were buried, or who ought to be buried, you know. Currently, I think an industrial warehouse and a filing cabinet doesn't befit their dignity. I think we owe them as a society. Mr. Howe, I appreciate your commentary. You know, this, although I'm Catholic and the group is doing this as Catholic, is nonpartisan, right? And I know there's a concern about the families being able to recover their remains. That means a lot to me. I think that's more likely to happen if there's a public display and a public plaque, and their names are displayed in public, and that's, that's what we're going for. And so, again, I appreciate all of your concern, and I trust your judgment and prudence in this matter. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you so much for those comments. I appreciate you being here. Next up, I am having a hard time reading this name here. It's on senior centers. You're welcome.
You threw me a curve this morning, I'll be truthful. Threw me a big curve. So I'll do my best and speak like a recording going 100 miles an hour. Okay. Hello, Chairman Beatty and County Commissioners. My name is Andre Simons in Cisco. I live at 5015 Jade, Wichita, Kansas. I'm here on behalf of seniors speaking out for senior centers. As I look more into senior centers, I become more confused of how funding for senior centers work. I have been advocating for senior centers for years, and I am more confused over the information I have learned. I do think that a redesign of the current system is needed. I have no idea where to tell you, the county commissioners or your staff, to look. The questions you guys were asked when you ran for county commissioner by the aging newspapers, do you think senior centers have enough funding? Most of you stated no, yet at the time the question was asked, funding was at .48 mils. In 2023, the mil rate for senior funding was .37. All seniors pay taxes to Sedgwick County, some even pay general fund taxes to improvement districts and cities. There are city, senior centers in the city of Wichita that receive $57,000 from Sedgwick County that pay the city of Wichita rent, $15,558. One pays $13,776, while other senior centers do not receive as much money in their senior centers, then their senior centers are funded by general fund taxes to help keep them operating. While I do agree that all senior centers offer the, don't offer the same services, they do have many things in common to meet the needs of the community. Can one of you, in simple terms, explain to me how this, how this system works? While I do understand why seniors attend to senior centers, volunteering opportunities, seniors can actively participate in volunteering at centers. Volunteering provides a sense of purpose, allowing them to give back to the community, foster connection with others. There is recreational activities, arts, crafts, games, music. Senior centers organize a variety of recreation activities. As you grow older, you find it more difficult to find companions within your age categories. Senior centers provide a place to gather, and many different social activities allow you to network with your local senior community. There are health and wellness programs. Many seniors, centers offer health programs related that force to maintain physical and mental well-being. These facilities also offer meals and nutrition plans, health and wellness classes, and fitness activities that allow you to maintain a healthy lifestyle. Participants can learn how to maintain chronic diseases, stay active and more healthy lifestyle. Senior centers are not something that you should have to pay to join and become a member of. Instead, they should be open and available to all seniors within the local area as, I, I heard the buzzer. Okay, thank you. Funding. Within the local area, as it should be funded by other means, including taxes of their participants. However, this is not the only source of funding. Senior centers require funding from several different and maintain operations. Some of these are, include federal and state government fundraising events, public and private grants and donations. Senior centers are a vital part of every community as services, service the vulnerable population, help keep activities and good quality of life for all older adults in the community. Research has shown that senior centers participants have a higher level of health, social interaction, overall life satisfaction compared to those peers that do not participate in senior centers. Within such overwhelming evidence of the benefits of senior centers, it is no wonder that communities are prioritizing the funding and facilities for these programs. Gone are the days when a senior center is viewed as merely a meeting ground for older populations. They offer senior populations information, resources, assistance, social interactions needed to leave a healthier, happier, and thriving life. Senior centers should be fully funded and easily accessible to all seniors and take advantage of this. Sedgwick County needs commissioners to support senior centers, not debate about funding for senior centers. They should help meet the needs of the senior population in all districts based on their needs. Thank you very much for any support you can give the senior centers.
Thank you, Ms. Cisco.
Senior speaking out for senior centers. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cisco. If I'm a betting man, I'd bet that we have, the senior centers are going to come up later in this agenda today, so if you'd want to hang out, I bet we'll be a more thorough and robust conversation around this topic.
Thank you.
Okay. The remaining people, there's three people left to sign up, and it's on a topic we're discussing, a new business, item H, the RHID proposed policy. Would you want to wait and talk at that point in time, or would you like to talk in public comment now? Your choice. We're welcome to do it that a way. It's, it's succinct with, is that good? Okay. Okay. So that concludes the remainder of the people that have signed up for, for public comment, so I'll make a motion to receive. So I'll make a motion to receive and file.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meisner. Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Proclamations, item B. Proclamation declaring developmental disability awareness month.
Okay, wonderful proclamation. I've asked Commissioner David Dennis to read.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I sincerely appreciate the opportunity to read this. Working with the folks that are intellectually and developmentally disabled is near and dear to my heart. I want to make sure that we support them. We do have it on our legislative agenda each year to help reduce the waiting list. Hopefully, we get some action on that this year. But at this time, I'd like to read a proclamation from Sedgwick County. Whereas intellectual and/or developmental disabilities are lifelong conditions which statistically affect more than 9,000 Sedgwick County children and adults and their families, many of whom wait on long lists for needed services and support. And whereas public awareness and education enhance a community's acceptance and understanding of issues affecting people living with developmental disabilities, and whereas the real people, real lives advocacy, and see me, for me campaigns aim to highlight the gifts and talents that this population brings to our communities, employers, schools, and houses of worship. And whereas the month of March has been designated as the National Developmental Disability Awareness Month, and thousands of social service agencies serving millions across our nation will be undertaking public awareness initiatives during this month. Now therefore, be it resolved that Chairman Ryan K. Beatty and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim March 2024 as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month in Sedgwick County, and call upon all Sedgwick County citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of developmental disabilities and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with developmental disabilities to live full, productive lives within our communities. Commissioner, you've heard the proclamation moved to approve.
I'll second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye.
And here to receive it is Kevin Fish, Executive Director of Ability Point, one of the two organizations, also Starkey. I want to make sure we mention them, that support this population. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Kevin.
Good morning. Thank you so much for this proclamation, and most importantly, for being so supportive to our community. In Sedgwick County, we have literally 15,000 individuals who are living with developmental disabilities, and when you include their families, it's a huge part of our community that needs and wants your support, and we greatly appreciate being a part of your platform and bringing acknowledgement to that huge waiting list. We're seeing some great things happen within the legislature right now. We feel like we're going to be able to move a lot of our community members off of that waiting list, but there's still much to do. There's still the need to build capacity so that we have a place for those to be served within our community, and that is so important. And so, again, we appreciate you, your leadership, and our Sedgwick County CDDO, which has been a guide for us and a huge support for all of our ADD agencies. With me today, we have a couple of our self-advocates who are rock stars in our communities. Ms. Linda grew up in a time when there was really no services, minimal services in our community, and seen amazing things happen. She's been able to work most of her adult life and retired this last year. And Ashley here, who works at the tag office here in Sedgwick County, was highlighted on your social media and is a wonderful story, and I'm going to have her tell you thank you. And then we've got a couple of our incredible moms, Aldana and Sheila, who, again, do so much to support the individuals, to advocate on their behalf, and we're really appreciative. So they put together a little thank you and a little celebrate abilities cookie here that we wanted to be able to share out with all of you, but I'm going to have Ashley say thank you, and we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Wonderful. Comments or questions? Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. Thank you so much for being here this morning. I had the opportunity to join you guys recently, a week or two ago, for the Donuts for Disabilities Awareness Month, and I just really appreciate hearing the stories that you told. It's very impactful. I loved the slideshow that you presented that day. You talked about how you, the stuff that you did back in the 90s, and it was really heartfelt for me because my cousin has gone through your program, and his picture was one that was highlighted that day. So it just really meant a lot to me, and hearing the stories from mothers, and I can't remember if you said fight like a mom, or advocate like a mom, or something like that, advocate like a mother, and I can't tell you how true that is, and just to hear the passion that you have for your son, and just the work that you do for everybody in this community that needs these services is just outstanding. So really appreciate you. Thank you for being here and allowing us to celebrate this month with you and to bring more awareness, and if there's anything that the county can do to be of help or help highlight, I mean, please let me know. Miss Unstoppable was a lot of fun when I went to that last year, and can't wait to see that again this year. I think it's the 10th anniversary this year.
It was 10th anniversary this last year.
This last year? Okay. Yep. Well, it's really exciting. Can't wait for that again, and just thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dennis.
Well, thank you, and thanks for being here today. Thanks for everything Ability Point does, everything that Starkey does. We sincerely appreciate your efforts in helping the population. We've had it on our legislative agenda for a number of years, five or six years now. It's been on our legislative agenda to help reduce the waiting list. Unfortunately, the waiting list keeps getting longer rather than shorter. This year, for the first time, I've seen the legislature actually bring it up. It's not going far enough to help everyone that needs help. And for the public that doesn't understand, if a young child goes on the waiting list, it may be 10 years before they get the first service from the state. That's unacceptable. So that's why we continue to fight for that. I thank you very much. I sincerely thank you for the cookie. Chairman Beatty keeps us through lunch most of the time, so this may be my lunch today. I think we're going to get a picture here after a bit, but thank you very much. I appreciate you.
These are going to come in handy. Just a couple of quick comments. Number one, Linda, retirement, I heard. Congratulations on that. That's wonderful. And then Ashley is one of our great employees here at Sedgwick County Government, works in the treasurer's office, I believe, right?
Yes.
And then, so I see her walking throughout the building quite a bit, and you're fabulous, and you're a shining example of everything we have that's great here at Sedgwick County Government. So we appreciate all the work you do, and I know your supervisors and bosses and your colleagues adore you. So thank you so much for all that you do. Last point, Commissioner Dennis talks frequently about the waitlist, and I know the legislature's going to try to move, I think I'd heard, a number of 500 or so people off the waitlist. I think that is exceptional news, but it poses a different challenge at that point, is those people coming off the waitlist need to come to communities that are serviced by the CDDO that have to have capacity and infrastructure to receive them in. And there's a lot of conversations happening about how we meet that need. So these conversations need to continue. These are complex, but we've got to be creative, and we've got to be, we've got to be bold in how we do some of these things. So we appreciate all that you do, all that you represent, and the work that you do on behalf of vulnerable people in our community. We want to get a picture with you. Is that okay?
Thank you.
Okay, great. We're going to go out front to the stairs so we can get a nice picture, and nobody's tripping over any of these wires here. If you can give us five minutes and be patient, we'll be right back. Opportunity and wonderful proclamation. Staff's a little noisy, aren't they, Tom? Exciting morning indeed. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments, item C. Resolution appointing Dr. Michael Burser to the Sedgwick County Community Corrections Advisory Board.
Mr. Wagner, sir.
Thank you, Chairman. Justin Wagner, County Counselor. This item is an appointment for Dr. Michael Burser. It's a reappointment to the Sedgwick County Community Corrections Advisory Board in the at-large education position. This board helps to formulate and make recommendations to the Sedgwick County Community Corrections Comprehensive Plan. This term and the resolution will be through February 20th of 2026. The resolution is in order, and the recommended action is to adopt it.
Okay. I think we just heard the motion, or we just heard the advice from our counselor, and I think Dr. Burser, I believe you're here today. Yeah, I'll wake you down here, and we'll, this is for all districts, so I'd be honored to make a motion to approve the reappointment of Dr. Michael Burser to the Sedgwick County Community Corrections Advisory Board. We have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. And joining us is our county clerk.
Good morning. All right. Ready, raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution and the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Community Corrections Advisory Board. So let me go. I do. Congratulations.
Very good. Chairman Beatty, Commissioners, just want to say thank you, and I look forward to the opportunity to continue to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Burser. We appreciate your service, and we say all the time that serving this community is more than just doing it from an elected position. We have over 30 boards here at Sedgwick County Government. All of them are important and provide incredibly important insight and feedback to the Commission. So thank you for willingness to serve. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item D. Resolution appointing Kevin McQuarter to the Sedgwick County Emergency Communications Community Advisory Board.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis. Oh, no. Justin Wagner.
Yes, thanks. Thanks, Chairman. As the deputy clerk mentioned, this item would be appointing Kevin McQuarter to the Sedgwick County Emergency Communications Community Advisory Board. This is a newly formed advisory board, and Mr. McQuarter is recommended for appointment by Commissioner Dennis. Each of the commissioners can recommend a member for appointment. The board is created to recommend policy and procedures to the Sedgwick County Emergency Communications Director and the staffing in Sedgwick County Emergency Communications. The draft resolution that's in front of you today would appoint Mr. McQuarter through March 19th of 2026. The resolution is in order, and the recommended action is to adopt it.
Okay. Now, Commissioner Dennis.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. First of all, I want to thank Kevin. He was here earlier, but he had to leave, unfortunately, so he did get sworn in before they left, so that's taken care of. But Kevin, I've known for some time. He's actually the chairman of my Citizens Advisory Board also, and recently, we had an opportunity to, as my entire Citizens Advisory Board, go over to 911 to learn what a absolute professional organization with great leadership that that is. And I wanted them to see that, despite some of the things that you've seen coming out of the Wichita Fire Union and other places. So after he saw and heard from Alora, he absolutely wished to serve on this committee so that we can let the citizens know exactly what's happening in 911, the true facts. We do still have an investigation going on that I hope that comes out with the results here in the near future, but whatever comes out of that investigation we've got going on currently, this new Citizens Advisory Board can help move any recommendations forward. And so I think he's the right person at the right time, and I make a motion that we appoint Kevin McQuarter to the board.
And I'll second that motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. And this is the first appointment to this advisory board, so, and there will be many more to come, so we're looking forward to all the impact this board will have. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New business, item E. A resolution determining the advisability of and authorizing the creation of a benefit district in Sedgwick County, Kansas, making certain findings relating thereto and authorizing and providing for the making of certain road improvements, therein Blue Stream Estates.
Okay, very good. Daniel, welcome.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Daniel Schrein. I'm Deputy Director of Sedgwick County Public Works. I'm here today with Garth Herman to present a resolution for a special benefit district for Blue Stem Estates, and we recommend the adoption of the resolution. This is Blue Stem Estates. It's roughly located on 47th Street between Rock Road and Webb. That's in Commissioner Howell's district. It's in District 5. The estimated project cost is $1.3 million, and that cost will be split amongst 20 lots and paid over a 15-year period. And I've also got Garth Herman here to answer any questions about bonding or the legal aspects of the resolution.
Good morning, Commissioners. Garth Herman with Gilmore and Bell, County's Bond Counsel. As Daniel mentioned, this is a resolution that authorizes the construction of this paving project in the Blue Stem Estates. It is at the request of a petition that was submitted by the property owners down there. It was signed by 100% of the property owners. Pursuant to your normal plan, once this has been authorized, and the county will move forward with the construction of this improvement. Once it has been completed and the final costs are known, then the county will move forward with the actual assessment of those costs through the special assessment process against those 20 lots pursuant to their request. Once that has occurred, then the county will issue the general obligation bonds that are going to be repaid from those special assessments. Adoption of this resolution is really what starts this whole process. With that being said, I'll stand for any questions, and if not, I would request that you consider the adoption of this resolution.
Okay, very good. Any questions for Garth? Questions? No questions? Okay. Well, I'd like to make a motion then, and let me know if my motion's correct, Justin, if you don't mind, but just kind of working through here. Just make a motion to authorize and provide for the making of certain road improvements in Blue Stem Estates? Or is this an advisability study?
I'm going to defer to Garth on this. This would be a motion to adopt the resolution to authorize those projects.
Okay, good. So I make a motion to adopt- So I make a motion to adopt the resolution to... Say that again?
Let's say a resolution to authorize the creation of the benefit district and to authorize the improvements therein at Blue Stem Estates.
Okay. Make a motion to authorize the creation of the benefit district, make certain findings related thereto, and authorize and provide for the making of certain road improvements in Blue Stem Estates.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Very good. Okay, next item, please.
Item F, A Resolution Determining the Advisability of and Authorizing the Creation of a Benefit District in Cedric County, Kansas. Making Certain Findings Relating There To and Authorizing and Providing for the Making of Certain Road Improvements Therein, Brinley Estates.
Okay.
All right, I'm back. This is a similar situation. This is for Brinley Estates. This is in District 1 and it's at the southeast corner of 69th Street North and Webb Road. This project has an estimated cost of $1.2 million and it will be shared amongst 23 lots, paid it back over 15 years after bonding is complete. And I will turn it over to Garth Herman again to answer any questions on this one. I'll bring up the map for you.
Good morning again Commissioners. Very similar process to the previous agenda item. With regards to this, it was a petition signed by 100% of the property owners. This authorizes the construction of those improvements. Once those are completed, the county will then go through the special assessment process to assess those final costs against these 23 lots. Thereafter, the county will issue bonds to finance those costs. I'll stand for any questions, but if not, a motion to adopt the resolution would be appropriate.
Okay. Any questions for Garth? Okay. I'm going to try to make a motion here that captures everything you need done here. So I'd like to make a motion determining the advisability of and authorizing the creation of the benefit district in Cedric County, Kansas. Make certain findings related thereto and authorize and provides for the making of certain road improvements therein and located within Brinley Estates. Okay? That's a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Meitzner.
Yes, thank you. This is a good project and it's in a fast-growing area. There's going to be economic growth up and down that corridor, so thank you for your help, Garth, on getting this presented. So it'll be a good project. Thank you.
I agree. Okay, we have a motion and a second that captures everything that you need done here. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Thank you, Garth. Appreciate you. Thanks again, Daniel. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item G, Set the Public Hearing for the Proposed Adoption of the National Electrical Code 2023 Edition.
And there is Chris Labor.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, thank you for the time today. For the record, Chris Labor, Metro Area Building and Construction Department. And yes, today, we're simply requesting that we set a public hearing for adoption of the 2023 version of the National Electrical Code. We're currently in the 2020 version. Ours, of course, has local amendments. The upcoming version does not have a great number of changes, we're happy to say. It does have a few items that will affect our residential builders. We've coordinated those extensively with WABA. So at this point, we see nothing controversial in the adoption of the code. We will be coming forward in about two weeks to thoroughly brief you all on the amendment package and the changes. It will be a very exciting meeting, I know. And so we'll, of course, address questions and concerns that you may have there. And at this point, requesting that we set the public hearing for the regular BOCC meeting scheduled for the 24th of April and that we receive authorization to publish that hearing.
Okay. Very good. Any questions or comments for Chris? Commissioner Howell.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. I appreciate the briefing this morning. If we have the hearing on the 24th of April, do we need to adopt it that day or can we adopt it at a later date? Do you have some time to respond to any comments that might come up?
Yes, Commissioner, you would have that option to leave the public hearing open and reconvene it at a later date.
And I assume that the advisory board has already been working on reviewing this and has come in, has essentially finished their recommended changes to this updated code?
Correct. The advisory board, our Board of Electrical Appeals, that advisory board are the ones that led this adoption effort.
I apologize for asking this, but I may have missed... I saw an email, I'm not sure I was able to pay attention to it just yet, and I will go back and find that again, but those recommended changes, has that been provided to us already?
The complete package has not yet. The resolution is in the agenda material for today, but the summary of changes and all of that has not yet been presented to you all.
And this is the same code we plan on using uniformly for most of Cedric County unless they have their own city code. I think the City of Derby, for example, is exempt from this and they do their own thing. But for the most part, most of the cities of the entire county, including Wichita, will be impacted by this policy. Is that correct?
That is correct, Commissioner.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. I just wanted to say I look forward to hearing, looking forward to finding out what's going to be changing, if anything, and then I'm not sure we should be too anxious to adopt it. We need to take our time. This is really important. We talk about regulations, how regulations cost people money and sometimes it slows down progress and makes things more difficult, more expensive. So I want to make sure if we do things that are very thoughtful, that make sure it makes sense for Cedric County. So I'm very interested in this and thank you for the chance to take a look at this again. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. And I believe, Commissioner, that the week of 8 April is when we're planning to meet with you all right now.
Very good. Very good. Other questions or comments for Chris?
Just looking at the date, Chairman. April 24th is the last Wednesday of the month. We generally don't have a meeting there. We could, if... Well, Commissioner, we can have a meeting that day, a court meeting to do this if that's the desire.
Okay.
Chris, is that technically what works for you?
And as long as it is after that date, because I believe the meeting before that does not give us 30 days, we went with that since it is on the calendar, but knowing that if that date moves, we would just push back.
Would May 1 work?
It would. Yes, sir.
Okay.
If that's the preference.
Any objection to moving to May 1? Okay. Other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll make a motion to set the public hearing date for May 1, 2024, and publish the notice of hearing in the official county newspaper.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Thank you, Chris. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item H, Consideration of a Policy for Reinvestment Housing Incentive District, H-RHID.
Okay. Mr. Brent Shelton, good to see you, sir.
Good morning, Chairman Beatty. Good morning Commissioners, for the record. I'm Brent Shelton, your Deputy Chief Financial Officer, and we're here this morning to discuss a proposed policy that would establish some guidelines for consideration of reinvestment housing incentive districts across Cedric County, as well as provide a beginning step so that we can communicate Commission concerns or the county guidelines in which we would propose that we would use as we go about analyzing the creation of such districts. So the reinvestment housing incentive districts were formerly known... Let me see if I can make the mouse work. Were formerly known as the rural housing incentive districts. In the last session of the legislature, they passed some expansion language to the rural housing incentive district statutes that enable now the 19 cities within Cedric County by population to be able to participate. They had a... They were under the $60,000 population limit before, but the county's population exceeded 85,000, so it wasn't eligible within Cedric County. That was changed so it's cities with a population below 65,000 or a county below 85,000. It's also eligible within qualified census tracts. This map gives you, in the yellow highlighted area, an idea of the boundaries of the qualified census tracts within which an R-HID could be established. You'll see that the predominance of these are located within the city limits of Wichita. So although they exceed that population limit, these would be eligible in Wichita. There's also some unincorporated area to the southeast of Wichita in the Oaklawn and Sunview areas in which it's eligible that the county could establish an R-HID. So this is some of the additional area in which these would be eligible in Cedric County. Now, the purpose of the statute is to create a program that's designed to encourage the development and renovation of housing within cities and counties, and it authorizes cities and counties to assist directly in the financing of certain eligible public improvements to support housing where there's a shortage existing in that community. Some of the highlights are that within an R-HID, you can have 100 units for sale or for rent that are developed in a given year. Within a project within an R-HID, you can have up to 50 owner-occupied or rental units developed. The limitation on the R-HID in terms of focus toward potentially affordable housing is that the average size of a residence per project within the R-HID cannot exceed 1,650 square feet. That excludes external parts of the structure, garages, porches, or any outbuildings. There's a component of this that also offers some additional incentive for renovations within qualified census districts where you have older structures. It can focus on downtown areas of smaller communities where they can do some lofts, if you will, on second stories of what typically is a commercial area. So it encourages a number of different types of dwellings. The R-HID operates much like tax increment financing, but some of the differences are that it captures all of the incremental increase in real estate taxes that are created by the housing development project. It has a limitation for up to 25 years for a given project within a reinvestment housing incentive district. I point that out because an R-HID may contain multiple projects and each of these projects can have a 25-year lifespan. So a district could be created, a portion of that district could be the boundaries of a proposed housing development. In 15 years from now, another project could come in and now we have a potential for a 40-year lifespan for capturing the incremental revenues in that R-HID. The statute outlines the eligible expenditures that R-HID incremental revenues can be used for. You see a partial list here, but also it can be used to reimburse the developer if they pay upfront for certain of these eligible expenditures. It could also be used to replace special assessments. It could be used as a revenue stream dedicated to special obligation bonds. So there's a number of different ways that this financing could be used for those eligible In brief, the process that a city would go through before they would be required to notify the county of a proposed R-HID is to get approval from the Secretary of Commerce of the State of Kansas. To do so, they need to demonstrate through a housing needs analysis that there's a shortage of housing that's a deterrent to economic growth. They provide them a number of pieces of information around the boundaries of the project and they then would create a development plan if they get that approval. And at that point, they can establish that ordinance to establish the R-HID and then notify the school district that might be affected or the... And the county that they plan to... That they've proposed an R-HID. An R-HID that's established by a city is subject to nullification by the school district or by the county within 30 days of notice of that development of that R-HID. Should the county propose an R-HID, any city within three miles of that proposed district would have the ability to nullify a county plan. So in order to do that, these affected governing bodies have to determine that there would be adverse effect to them by the creation of the district. Once we receive notification, we have 30 days, as you know, to take action to nullify the creation of the R-HID. Failure to take action allows the R-HID to go into existence. As we've done with TIF districts, we would propose that we would analyze the R-HIDs to determine if there's any adverse effects to the county. And in the event that the fire district is one of the districts that would be required to participate, we would try to determine adverse effect for them as well. We would go through a risk analysis, fiscal analysis to make these determinations. The policy draft that you have focuses on four things. Primarily, the focus is that there is a shortage of housing within this area, that that shortage of housing is providing a substantial deterrent to economic growth. And we've given some ideas and types of economic growth that we would be interested potentially in incentivizing through the R-HID. And that that incentive, the R-HID, is required to make this development happen. If there's another way to do it, there's not a reason for the county to participate with public funds. And we would also propose that, as we've heard comments from Commissioners, that there's a predisposition to more favoring urban infill, which seems to be a need that the market isn't meeting as it might be meeting suburban growth in or outlying communities. I want to spend some time on adverse effect because this is the communication piece that we want to get out to cities. These are the things that we're going to consider when we're looking at whether or not a proposed R-HID creates adverse effect to the county. And I would add, not just to the county, but to school districts. This can affect townships. This can affect cemetery districts, a number of other districts that are paying taxes that this housing... That this incremental tax would be deferred from them. So we're trying to take a holistic approach as we take a look at this. How does it provide that... Does it make fiscal or economic sense? So the first item for adverse effect is whether or not this potential loss of tax revenue or a potential increase in public services could hinder the delivery of those public services. What's the impact on fire, EMS, and law enforcement having additional rooftops without accompanying property tax revenues to support the delivery of service in those areas? The second one is the but-for argument. Can this project be done without R-HID and if so, it didn't satisfy the but-for requirement that we would have as well as is defined in statute? It is presumed that you have to have this to make this project work. Does the developer have enough skin in the game? We've seen projects in the past that are too highly leveraged with public funds. It's easier for the developer to walk away from those. As stated in statute, do the public benefits outweigh the public costs? Is deferring this tax revenue for a period of time and then getting it, does that outweigh the public costs? We want to determine that through some analysis. As I mentioned earlier, these plans can extend the life of the district. So is the plan and the district boundary contiguous, which would provide for that limitation without the ability for that to be extended? Might there be some predetermined amounts on the incentive or on the term that are not inherent in the proposal? That that could be adverse effect because it's too open-ended? Do we have enough information to make these determinations? And because of the potential overlap that would... And because of the potential overlap that would be inherently incompatible, you couldn't put an RHID over a TIF district. It might not make sense to do it where there's a lot of tax abatements because then you're not going to get incremental growth. That overlap could be considered an adverse effect. And then we don't want to create a playing field that incentivizes one developer at the expense of another. We want to keep a level playing field, avoid unintended consequences of potentially incentivizing one developer, and now we need to incentivize another to level a playing field that this public incentive caused the issue. So before you, you have a policy draft. As I said before, this is intended to provide guidelines and communicate these guidelines to other communities in the county and establish a starting point for us to begin to analyze and review any potential RHIDs that would come to us. And in terms of communication, I accepted my first speaking gig this morning to share this next Wednesday to a group of economic developers in the county. So for those reasons, I would approve that, I would recommend that you approve the reinvestment housing incentive district policy by adopting the resolution and then authorizing the chairman to sign. I'm available for questions.
Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. And Brent, thank you. First I ever heard of RHIDs was probably three or four years ago when I was at a KAC conference, but the first word was rural and kind of discounted it because it didn't apply to Sedgwick County. So in the meantime, we hadn't heard much about RHIDs until three weeks ago, actually. And as a result of discussions three weeks ago, said, well, we don't have a policy on RHIDs within the county. I appreciate all the work that you did and your staff did and everyone else on the staff to take a look at and get us more information on how these worked, and that's what you briefed us today, as we were unaware of a lot of the aspects of how an RHID works. I believe that a policy is absolutely needed, and why is it coming up at this point in time? Because three weeks ago, we didn't know anything about it, and so as a result, we determined that we needed some kind of a policy. You all worked very hard on drafting the first draft of the policy and presented it to the board on Monday. And at that point in time, and it's always nice to have five different commissioners' ideas expressed, and a lot of concerns came up during that, and their ideas were, you did a great job of incorporating them into the policy that we have before us today. This can affect not only that entity that's asking for that, but the entire county because we have to provide services throughout the county, not just in certain areas. And it takes funding to provide those services throughout the entire county. And the citizens want sheriff, EMS, fire, 911, comm care, aging, and all of the 40-some departments that we have within Sedgwick County, and it takes dollars to do that. There are a lot of avenues that happen in the county on how that we develop and grow, and this is a growing county. One of the fastest-growing cities in the county is, in the state, is here in Sedgwick County. Several other cities are close behind on growing. We just saw today two cases where the specials we approved moving forward with specials. That's something that the developers understand, and an RHID can put that developer at a disadvantage to other developers. So I think there's a very strong need for a policy, and I'll support the policy that you have before us. Thank you.
Okay. Just as a reminder, we have three individuals that have signed up to speak, so we'll get to, we'll come back, circle back this way. Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Chairman. Actually, that was one of my questions, was are we going to hear from the public on this? Being a policy that might impact cities and individuals in the community, I want to make sure they have a chance to speak to this as well. And my other question is, again, has this been out in the public for very long? When did this get published for public consumption, this policy draft?
The policy draft, as you're seeing, is just now being made available to the public.
Right now.
Right.
Yeah. And so with that, I think we need to give the public a chance to speak to it. I, just to say, I don't know, you know, with 30 potential districts, this, you said there's 30 census tract districts in Sedgwick County, but virtually every city could also provide, if you will, on top of that. Am I reading this correctly?
That's correct.
There's 19 other cities outside of Wichita, and potentially any one of them could say we have a shortage of housing and make an application for up to 100 homes per year, potentially. So you add that in, there could be theoretically up to 49 of these projects per year, up to 100 housing units per project. That's getting kind of up there. And then, of course, this is a yearly event, potentially. So, you know, math-wise, this is a bit alarming that that's what might come. I don't think that's all going to happen, obviously. That's a worst-case scenario, perhaps. If it did happen, we'd have a lot of housing. But anyway, is there a requirement for any expert communication at this point, Mr. Counselor?
Justin Wyner, County Counselor. Commissioner Howe, this is not, this is a policy action that you have in front of you today and not a quasi-judicial action. I don't think there's a need for expert contact.
Thank you. I, I've talked to a couple people, I think, that are, you know, city leaders that are thinking about some of this type of stuff, and so I wanted to disclose that if that was something I needed to do. With that, I'd like to hear the comments from the public, Mr. Chairman, and hopefully we'll talk about this a little bit more in a few minutes. Thank you.
We'll get right there. Commissioner Meister.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brent, I think we've discussed, I'll make sure, so in previous incentive programs, we were able to carve out various pieces or make adjustments. But according to this program, it's like a cemetery, everything is carte blanche and is waived on the collection of any property tax, anything related to property. So I did, but I do see in the policy, page two, whatever, but this county could limit the total monetary incentive. That's what you're, that's a recommendation in the policy. So that's, so it's not a violation of the state RHID policy if we make our policy that limits the amount of a project financially, incentive, whatever you call it.
The way I envision that that might work is should a project come to us and there's a million-dollar funding gap to make it feasible.
Right.
We could capture and distribute incremental taxes until we hit a million dollars and then stop it. That I would propose would be predetermined in the development agreements with the ordinances resolution, so everybody knows upfront.
Per applicant.
This would be the end of it.
Right. And that could be on, that would be our financial analysis done by the applicant requests. You financially churn it and determine or make a recommendation, and then we, as a commission, could expand that or limit it even further.
Certainly. So if, I guess if we didn't have that sort of limitation, the project could run for 25 years.
Right.
If you place that limitation, and if you've reached that monetary limit in five, in three years, five years, whatever the term might be, then we would be able to turn it off because it would have been pre, it would have been agreed upon at the inception of the district. So that's the idea, is to make the incentive, make it work, not to continue at the expense of the local governments.
Thanks for clarifying. So things like pilot or payment and lived taxes, those, or carve out any piece, is not possible under the RHID rules?
No, because the taxes are being levied and paid, they're just being distributed, the distribution is being diverted to the RHID, not to the local governments.
Okay. And lastly, I briefly shared this with you this morning, but for the other commissioners, so I had checked with my peers in Johnson County, and they're working through it as well, but they're not at a policy stage yet. But what was interesting to note is they felt that this was an urban program, and so like us, we didn't think population-wise it had an impact. But they did approve one last year in the urban environment next to the Panasonic plant for a large housing project because of the lack of workers at the Panasonic. So it was more of an economic development decision that they made to approve, and that was last year. So I think the state reevaluated and changed from urban to whatever the word is now, instead of urban, or it's reinvestment, anyway, was based on that Panasonic decision that was supporting. I just am sharing that with my fellow commissioners, so thank you. May I have some other questions later? Thank you.
Okay. I will have more questions for you, Brent, so don't go far.
Be right here.
Thank you. So let's go ahead and invite some of the folks that are here to share on this topic, and I'll start with Mayor George Lee.
Thank you, Chairman Beatty. County Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to speak this morning as it relates to RHIDs. I think we're the ones that have kind of precipitated discussions on policy and appreciate the work that you're doing. A couple of thoughts that I have, I would hope that any policy that gets put into place is needs-based. In our community, our project is an apartment complex project. Currently, our population of over, little over 5,000 residents, we do not have any Class A apartment buildings. So that creates a gap in our housing stock that, we've got plenty of duplexes. We just, our meeting Monday night approved assessments of subdivisions, so we see our tax rolls increasing in the community. So housing really, duplexes and housing isn't an issue for us, but we do have a severe gap in apartments. So policy being, you know, needs-based, I think specifically for our smaller communities is really important. The other thing is that, that in addition, that I think these projects need to have some economic benefit. I know we had Wichita State do a cost-benefit analysis, and our project has a two-to-one return on the incremental investments. Third, I mean, we don't take lightly either the use of citizens' tax dollars. I know in the past, we've had some situations in Goddard, and I spent a whole year railing against using incentives for things that shouldn't be used for, and that we need to take our incentives that we have available to us and target them to things where we have need. And I think in this case, this is something where we have a need. It's really a public-private partnership, much like a grocery store will sell milk at a penny over cost to get people into a store. I see this project for us, one, if we get the apartments built, it will also spur additional economic development in our community. We're at a tipping point with our retail developments, where if we can increase our population density to some degree, we're going to see restaurants, some strip centers, additional retail filling in our area. We're not as close to New Market Square as Mays is, so, I mean, we have a real potential in terms of developing our retail market, which increases our tax base immediately. The other thing I think to point out is an apartment building like this has maybe an 80-year life with 5% inflation. You know, over time, the appreciation of these apartments will double in approximately 14 or 15 years, so repayment of that tax revenue going to pay that will probably be in a 15-year, 20-year range. And then you're going to have another 60 years of the useful life of those apartments on the tax rolls, paying their taxes, you know, and covering the essential services that are provided. I mean, we appreciate the fire protection, the 911 protection, the sheriff's, you know, protection that, you know, works with our police department and provides service to our community. I would just hope that any policy that gets developed is, has enough leeway within it that it'll allow for needs that we have in our community. I mean, when we get the third or fourth one of these, we're going to be thinking really hard, too, about not continuing tax dollars, but for us, I mean, providing these incentives, entering into these partnerships, private-public partnerships, is, I think, essential for our community. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Lee. Commissioner Howe?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, got a question for you. Thank you, Chairman. The project you have going right now, have you already made the application for the RHID?
Yes, we have.
What's the date? What was the date of submission?
I need some help with some of the details on this. Yeah, here. Good questions.
Hi, Jokes from Paulsoni Law Firm, here on behalf of Goddard Housing LLC. We made the application almost a year ago. I think you all are somewhat familiar with process by now, but first step in the process is that you have a housing needs analysis that has to be approved by the Secretary of Commerce. That was back in October '23, so formal application may have been a year ago or so, but approved by the Secretary.
When I went to the city, the schools, and the county, what's the date that that was sent out, if you will, to the three jurisdictions that need to essentially have the option of nullifying or not speaking to it, or whatever it is they're going to do? When was that start date for that consideration?
For consideration of the housing plan?
Yes.
So that housing plan hasn't been approved yet. I think the county and school district would have gotten notice of calling a public hearing last month, is that right, Craig? Or February?
We've not received that yet. We have.
You would have received it, and you'll receive another notice of the, in the event city approves it of the housing plan.
I guess I need to know what the date is.
April, April 1st.
April 1st.
Will be the hearing.
Okay. And so we have until what date for us to?
If approved.
Yes, I know we cannot speak to it, and it simply is approved, but if we wanted to speak to it, we have until what date?
May 1st, if it's approved.
Counsel, is that correct?
That's correct. Commissioner Howe, you have 30 days from the closing of the public hearing at the city level, so that would be May 1st.
All right. I probably have some other questions. I'm going to hold off for a little bit. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions for Mayor? Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate you being here. We met about three weeks ago, and during that discussion, I asked you directly whether or not that you would cut this off early if you had enough income, and I was, if I'm misstating, please correct me, but what I heard was you wanted to run it for 25 years. And today, you said that it's possible you could pay it off in 14 years, if I'm not misstating what you said. So what I'm trying to find out is what's the duration that you're looking at?
Well, I think that we have a $3.5 million cap on the project, so whatever time it takes for the tax revenue to pay that off, so that's what I'm saying, based on inflation and those things, I don't believe it'll run the 25 years, but, you know, I'm thinking it'd probably be within a 15- to 18-year timeframe. I haven't sat down and, I'm an ex-banker, but I haven't taken the time to do the mental gymnastics on that. That just makes my brain hurt anymore, so.
Again, and when Brent briefed us a few minutes ago, he indicated that if you put another one right beside it, it restarts the 25 years on the first one.
No, I don't think that, that is not our intention. If we establish another one of these, it'll be separate. I view this as kind of a one, two, three. I think we talked about that, how many, and I think I said three, and I think Craig said, well, maybe four. But, I mean, we're conscious of using those tax dollars wisely, too, and so I don't see this as an open-ended invitation for every developer and anybody that wants to develop property in our community to line up for this because we're just not going to. going to operate that way.
Okay. Well, thank you for the answers. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Howell.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Chairman. Second bite at the apple here, Mr. Mayor. This 3.5 million you're talking about, is that an actual estimate for the infrastructure that's needed for this project, right?
Yeah.
And that would be paid for with, if you will, with the deferred taxes, tax increment from the city, the school district, and in the county?
Right.
Right? If you break that down, I'm curious, has anybody done the analysis that said out of that 3.5 million, based on current mill levy, what's the percentage of that 3.5 million that belongs to the county? So what's the net fiscal effect for the Sedgwick County government? Does it make sense? What's your total mill levy, sir? Do you know?
31 on general, our general mill levy. Total is like 145?
One of the lowest in Sedgwick County, but don't have to memorize total mill levies. 31 is what the city--
That's our city, our city mill levy is 31.
You're going to be shocked when I tell you this, but I actually have it right in front of me. I just realized I have it here, so.
Good. Ask me questions you know the answer to, all of it.
I know. All right, so Goddard has a assessed value of $66 million. That's assessed, not appraised, okay? And then if you go over to the--
Probably higher than that now.
Okay, so right now, city mill levy, I should do this right here.
31.92 or something like that.
It's the, the city mill levy is 31.298.
29, I transposed it.
Does the state 21.5 mills get deferred on this as well? It does as well. State and county together is 48.371, and the schools is 54.893. Altogether, all three of those together is 134.562 mills. That's including our 28.988 mills. So I have a percentage of that, so 29.988 out of 134.562. About, that's about 18% roughly, off the top of my head.
Okay.
So 18% of 3.5 million, we're talking about less than, we're talking about basically $600,000 roughly, 800, $600,000, $800,000, county, right? Over, pardon me?
Fire district.
Okay, fire district as well. So that's another, that's deferred tax, actually lowers, if you will, the county damage, if you will, because it's going to, because some of the revenue is deferred from fire district. Actually, it brings the county government cost down maybe to around, I'm just going to spitball, maybe $600,000 over 18 years, right? What's the total investment of this project? Not counting, not counting the 3.5 million, how much is--
17 million.
17 million. And we, and there's a but for, if we, if this isn't provided, you're promising this was not going to happen. If there's not an incentive, as described, this is not going to happen. In other words, there's a but for.
Sure.
But for this incentive, it's not going to happen. Right? He says yes.
That's my understanding.
Okay. I'm beginning to understand what this is about. I get it. I don't necessarily want to wait until May 1st. I feel like I need a couple of weeks, Mr. Chairman, for me to chew on this math a little bit, you know, form up my numbers, but I think my numbers are not that far off. Let's just say, fire district has, let's say, $100,000 hit over 18 years, whatever the number's going to be, maybe 15 years with inflation. The county's going to have a $600,000 hit, if you will, over 18 years. And with that, there's a $17 million investment to Sedgwick County. And the increment, again, once this pays off, the increment comes right back to the county. So if that's the terms we're talking about, this is more interesting, especially if the but for is real. That but for really matters to me. There has to be a but for. I understand to get Commerce to approve this, you had to oppress upon them, the but-for data has to be presented to them for them to approve, which is a step in the process, right?
Right, and they've done that.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'm not ready to vote on this today, but I think I'm beginning to understand why this is. And my initial thought was, we're going to have a $3.5 million hit, and that's not quite the way this is. That's not exactly the way it is.
We're taking on part of it, too.
I understand. City's got a hit, in fact, the bigger hit that we do, the state's got a hit, schools have a hit, as well as the fire district. But the county, the impact on the county budget is pretty small. Actually, if I was right, about 600, maybe $650,000 over the next 18 years, we're talking, you know, $50,000 a year roughly, maybe not even that. In the meantime, there's a $17 million in, you know, capital investment made into the county. And again, that increment will come on. My question, I guess my biggest questions are this. If we can absolutely guarantee that all of the increment is going to go pay for the infrastructure, and this is going to be suspended when infrastructure's paid off, those are the two points I need to understand. If those things are true, then I'm not necessarily going to be against this. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. I have a question for Justin and Tom. Because what we're dealing with today is the policy. We're talking about Sedgwick County government's policy. I do think it's helpful that there is an application in lieu, or in, that's in the queue, that helps us to kind of process our policy live. I do think that's helpful. But we're talking about our policy today. When do we, an application like what Goddard has that's in queue, we're going to have a separate opportunity to have a conversation about that, correct? Does that happen in a staff meeting, 2-2-ones? What's that?
Chairman, I think maybe on the legal end of things, I think that was the timeframe, the 30 days after, if the city would approve this, any city that may have one of these in front of them, within 30 days, the Board of County Commissioners can nullify one of these with a resolution finding adverse effect. That's the timeframe. And that would have to be done, of course, in an open meeting. But I defer to the manager on any other thoughts he has on that.
No, I agree. It has to be, the action has to be taken in a, if there is an action, you don't have to do anything. It's tacit approval to be quiet. But if you're going to take an action, it has to be done in a BOCC meeting before--
So is your idea, Tom, is it, because there is, these are big projects, and there is impact to the county, and we've got to do some balancing act between benefit versus cost. Is your idea, when an RHID comes through, to do maybe 2-2-ones?
Yes.
Handle this in staffs, that we're going to have a bite at that apple and really analyze the data? Because what Commissioner Howell's raising, this is interesting questions, that we need to understand these on a big level, that isn't happening today. We're not asking Goddard to come here and present the case today for their specific application.
Right. We're talking generalities today.
We're talking generalities, yeah.
I don't know that any, Commissioner Howell's numbers on this isolated project, or I'm sure Accret will validate, but I'm sure he's right on. The question is, what happens when you get a number of these as they add up around the county? Because I think this is going to be a popular tool.
We're talking policy.
That's why we need to--
I just want to make sure that we have a separate conversation with their specific application. Commissioner Dennis.
Well, thank you. Actually, I wanted to make the same kind of comments. Commissioner Howell took us down a path that we're not on today. We're on a completely different path. We're looking at a policy today, and this policy is going to affect all of Sedgwick County, not just one city within Sedgwick County. So if we take and multiply all of his numbers by the hundreds that could develop in the future, it's a big number. So we have to have a policy in place that the cities can look at, and they can then come in and try and adapt to whatever our policy is. We're on the wrong track if we're trying to concentrate on one, because that's not what we're doing today. So I just wanted to reiterate, we're trying to get a policy in place that we can look at for all of the county, not one city. Thank you.
Commissioner Lopez.
I think I would agree with that. If we expand that conversation that Commissioner Howell is having, let's say $600,000, but there could be 40 a year or more, over 16, 25 years, however long, I mean, that's a $24 million hit to Sedgwick County. And people are going to be paying that, but it'll be other tax, people who are paying taxes. And so I just want to make sure that we're being very careful with how we're looking at this on a large scale, because we're hearing from our residents today about how they're potentially being taxed out of their homes as it is. And I just, I would really struggle adding any additional taxes on top of what we're doing to help pay for, even if it's just for a partial time. So I just, I'm not comfortable today passing anything. I feel like I have to get a lot more information before I'm ready to take the next step, just because I need to see the bigger impact to the county overall, and not just for one project at one time that could last, for what this could look like if there were 40 projects a year, every single year. I mean, that's significant, so that's where I'm at.
Chairman, back to your question. I think one of the things that the policy helped determine is, what is our protocol when we are approached with these? We received notice in late February, Commissioner Dennis and I, and I think this makes sense, that whoever the commissioner in the district is would meet with the elected from the city or whoever, and have it a preliminary meeting, which is what Commissioner Dennis and I did about three weeks ago now, probably. And then we apprise all of the commission. I think that's probably the standard as we go forward in this. And then we bring it into a staff meeting, but ultimately, it has to go to a BOCC meeting if you want to take a formal action.
Okay. That's helpful.
Chairman, Chairman Beatty, just briefly, I just have one quick comment. You know, all this isn't happening in a vacuum. And right now, Sedgwick County has a housing shortage of somewhere between, you know, 3,000 and 5,000. So I believe that maybe in the next three or four years, this will be something, and it'll be really popular. But I think then, as equilibrium comes back into the housing market, builders got to build, and they want to make money. And if there's, if the housing market is stabilized, then I think we'll see a probably reduction in the use of these types of projects. I mean, that's just my general feeling about the economy, but just that this isn't happening in a vacuum, and we do have a housing shortage in the county, and these types of things will help our community, but also, I think, address that larger issue of housing shortage in the county.
Appreciate your feedback, Mayor. Commissioner Howell.
All right. So two more points I'll make. I just did the math just to confirm. I am, I was close. So the, if it was a 15-year payback, again, not counting inflation and other things, other factors that might change the numbers a little bit, but on today's numbers, today's mill levies, it's right at $50,000 per year to the county, if it was a 15-year payback. And then for the fire district, it's $31,000 a year for 15 years. So those are the updated numbers. That's, that's not what I thought it was going to be, so I think that's a little bit more palatable. I would say one reason that property taxes are going up, we, people, people are screaming about property taxes. And I agree. We, one of the, I want to do things, whatever I can do to keep that inflation, to keep the values from going up too fast. And this is a supply and demand issue. When the demand is high and the supply is low, it causes prices to go up. So this might have an impact, an effect, if you will, of providing, if you will, more housing opportunities, which then lowers the demand, I should say, actually increases the supply, has the same net effect, though, which then potentially means that the increased housing prices will slow down a little bit. So there's an advantage to doing this, to all taxpayers. Let's not forget that. The principle that's bothering me mostly, if this is for things that would not happen naturally, organically, then I may be more interested in this. But generally speaking, a free and fair market says we don't incentivize one developer over another, we don't incentivize this housing subdivision over this housing subdivision with some type of government incentive, because it kind of violates the competition, the fairness, if you will, of one entity to another. What makes this different is if, is if there is truly a lack, and it's not going to happen without the incentive. To me, that but for, again, is a critical piece. But the advantage to doing this, to some limited fashion across the county, if you will, not just this one, but future ones. The reason we're talking about this one, because it's in front of us. I'm focused on the policy today, just like you mentioned, but this one kind of brings it to life, okay? The reason I might want to support this in other places around the county for a time is, again, gets back to this issue of keeping our housing stock, a supply of that, to keep our housing from being in short supply, which causes the, causes the prices to go up maybe in a way that we can't really control that. It's a supply and demand issue, which is what the economy is all about, supply and demand. So by providing a little bit more supply, you meet that demand, the prices don't climb so quickly. So there is a benefit, if you will, to providing, if you will, more housing, however you can get that housing built. So I think this is a little bit more complex than just this one project, that there's kind of a policy, a reason for the policy. It does make some sense to me at this point. Mr. Chairman, again, I'm not ready to vote on this today. I hope we can get a motion, maybe to defer for two weeks. If not, if nobody else wants to make that motion, I might make that motion for a two-week delay, because I need to chew on this a little bit more. I love the discussion. I'm not ready to vote yet, but I do want to say I'm not necessarily against it at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Craig and Joe, get right to you. Hold on one second. Commissioner Meister.
Can we hear from the other two? And then I've got a series of--
Questions.
I've been reevaluating the policy, and so Brent, want to get back with you about the policy. And I respect the opportunity of Goddard, but I want to get back on the policy as soon as possible.
Okay. Let's hear from City Administrator Craig Crossitt.
Honorable Chairman Beatty, County Commissioner. I'm going to be real quick, because I think our mayor really covered the topic quite well, and some of the questions, we flushed out some of the other things I wanted to discuss. So I think reading the temperature of the board has helped me just want to share that we would like some additional time to work with county staff and provide feedback on the policy. There was a few of the legal interpretations that were shared that we disagree with a little bit, as far as the interpretation of the statute, and I think that we need to suss those out together to make sure that the policy is accurately reflecting those different elements. So I also just want to thank the county staff for including us on the process, and the county commissioners have taken time to receive feedback from us. So, thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you. Quick question, Mr. Manager.
Yes.
I don't have a problem with giving a little bit more time on the policy if it's needed, but, so what is your intention, then? Are you still going to send us something on one April, or are you going to wait until we work something out?
So if the county is willing to continue open dialogue with us and working with us, we have the option of opening our hearing and keeping it open in case we need some additional time. But we would like to, you know, get our project moving forward, if, at any rate, we have, again, we have zero Class A apartments, and we're highly motivated to make this occur, and it's not going to occur but for the incentive.
I understand that. I just want you to be aware that we learned about this with the meeting with you all three weeks ago.
Sure.
And we didn't have a policy in place. So we're kind of rushing trying to get a policy in place. It may not be perfect policy today, but we needed something in place before you sent something to us. So if your intention is to send something to us, I'm not inclined to wait on this policy. If your intention is to wait until we can work out a policy and get one approved by this commission, I'm willing to do that. So it's kind of in your ballpark right now, because you're the ones that drove us to have to start working this policy today.
So that the deadline to either do nothing or veto is May 1st, which I know the days roll by fast, but that's several weeks away. We're willing to be patient and continue to work with the county staff, you know, at whatever rate necessary.
You just said two different things. I wanted you to delay sending anything to us past one April sometime, so that we can work something out. I want you to know what our policy is before you submit something to us. And this is what we're trying to do today, is put together a policy that you understand what it is. What you're asking is that we don't do anything today, you send us something, and then we have 30 days. You don't know what we're going to do.
I'm not sure how to answer that, you know, to give you the answer that you'd like to hear, but--
So your answer is you're going to still submit it to us on April 1st?
We called for the hearing to be held on April 1st, so I think that we have to have it then. I would like Joe, who is also on the list, to, who can articulate maybe some of these specifics better than I can.
But I think the fact that you mentioned we can leave the hearing open, I mean, 30 days, I mean, just the amount of time, I mean, we don't want to rush, yeah, but, you know, we've been working on this for a long time, too. So, I mean, an additional 30 days, I mean, I'd be, I think our council would be amiable to that. I mean, we don't want to put you in a box, but we don't want to be, you know, wait until next January either. I mean, you know, so, I mean, I think we're more than happy to be reasonable in giving you a proper amount of time, so.
Okay. But if you submit something to us on one April, we have until one May to make a decision, and you don't know what our decision is based on.
Right. And I, and I'm, and that's what I'm saying at this point. If, if you tell me you need an extra 30 days, we'll delay 30 days and bring it forth in May. But I just don't want to, I just don't want to create an open end situation where we're waiting.
No, I agree. But I want to make sure.
No, I, I, I hear what you're saying, and I'm, I'm amiable to, to trying to, you know, give you, give you adequate time. Because I, I know haste makes waste, and I, you know, I hate to see things rushed. But on the other hand, you know, we've got a developer that'd like an answer, too, so.
Sure.
But anyway.
We only had three weeks to come up with this policy.
Sure, no, I know, I know. So how much time, how much time would you propose?
And as a result, Monday, when we had our staff meeting, we made a lot of changes after that staff meeting.
Sure.
So I'm amiable to make changes, but we can't be rushed into this by meeting your deadline.
And I'm not trying, I don't think we're trying to. That wasn't our, that's not our intent. But how much additional time are you thinking? I guess that's, that's the question.
We've got to ask the staff, Brent, how long, or County Manager.
Well, I'll go first, and then Brent can chime in. I'm listening to the dialogue here. We have been, we know there are numerous cities in Sedgwick County exploring this. So what makes sense now is to maybe convene with staff from many cities to craft this policy, not just one. And I, so I'm, and, and the, the more you debate and the bigger the table gets, it takes a little bit of time to get everybody on board. And then we, we've got some legal counsel issues here, too, where there's interpretation issues. I think legal counsel needs a chance on this to some degree, not only our legal counsel, but Gilmore and Bell and other city attorneys perhaps. So this is, this is a, can be a fairly complex topic, and I don't know. If it's just Goddard, I think we could do something in a few weeks. But I, I think it's bigger than that. I think, I know we have a number of cities.
I agree. It's, I think it's much bigger. We've got 20 cities in Sedgwick County, any one of which could start working this forward. So we, we have to divine a, a policy that meets the needs of Sedgwick County, not just Goddard or, or some other individual city. But I don't want to be rushed. I want, I want to do it right. And what you're, your deadline is rushing us, so.
Commissioner, the, according to the map that Brent showed, the, the biggest swath of availability for this tool is Wichita. I haven't had a chance to talk to Mr. Layton yet or his legal staff at all. I, I think it would be prudent to do so. They've not made application for any, and actually, they're not even reaching out. But I think I'll have to bring him into the conversation.
Yeah. Well, I don't think we can be ready in 30 days. So if that's not going to meet your needs, then, then we've got an issue.
Go ahead, Brent.
I guess from my perspective, if we have a policy in place, it's not a policy that's cast in stone, it's a policy that can be amended. So I would suggest approving these, this set of framework, this set of guidelines today. As I mentioned earlier, I can take this out, speak to the cities in the county, speak to the school districts, get some feedback and go forward. But this document will begin to open that dialogue and communicate your concerns, your ideas about how the county would propose to analyze a potential R H I D. With or without the policy, we're going to go through the process of analyzing one. This just sort of codifies, if you will, your, your concerns, your guidelines.
Okay. Commissioner Howe.
Thank you, Chairman. I, I, sometimes it takes a long time to get these policies right. And I understand Commissioner Dennis's point. I would like to invite cities to speak, but they need to speak in a timely fashion. I, I, I would like to see us push this off for two weeks, give cities, if you will, two weeks to respond, then give us another week or so to incorporate changes. We ought to be able to bring this back within three weeks to approve something. But I don't think, I don't, I don't want to approve this policy today, because I think there are some things that need to be adjusted right now. And I don't want to approve a policy that know, that we know right now has, at least I believe it has, has changes that are necessary. So I think we can make, at least myself, I could be happy within three weeks. I think if we invite cities to speak, it gives us a couple of weeks to receive their comments, a week for us to incorporate, I think we'd be ready to approve this. And at that point, if, if the City of Goddard wants to have their hearing and table it pending this policy being approved, they could certainly do that. They could take it back up and finish their work on this whenever they feel like that, they want to pull that trigger and get things moving forward. We then, at that point, we can take it up early in that 30-day window. And, and if you will, we want to vote on it and affirm, affirm, have an affirmative vote, yes or no, that gives you guys an answer more quickly. We don't have to wait for 30 days for this to, to, to be approved by, by the clock. We can certainly take it up and, and approve it by a resolution. So I, I don't think there's any reason for us to push this off. I, I think everyone needs an answer sooner than later. I don't want to ask for, you know, six months. I think that's too, too, too much time. I would say two weeks for receiving comments, another week for us to incorporate those comments, bring it back to the commission, hopefully approve that. And then we can work on any projects that are out there and bring them, get them moving through the process as quickly as they want to move forward. So, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we would defer this to the commission for three weeks to reach out to cities, receive, to receive comments and bring back, if you will, a, hopefully an updated policy for us, for our consideration in three, three weeks.
Okay. There's a motion. Commissioner Dennis has a comment.
Thank you. Well, the problem with Commissioner Howe's recommendation is that puts us past the one April date that the City of Goddard is interested in moving this forward on. And that puts me in a box, because without a policy in place, if they submit something to us, my, my option is probably to deny it, because we don't have a policy. And that's not right for Goddard. If we can work something out to have a good policy in the future that can work for all of Sedgwick County. So I, I can't support this motion that's on the table, because it doesn't give us time to work with the entire county and do everything that Manager just said that we need to do. Thank you.
Okay. If it's okay, Joe Oakes still needs to, he signed up to speak. And I'm going to pause real quick, because I want to allow Joe to speak, because he might be able to give us some information that we can shape some of the remaining comments, if that's okay. Joe, go ahead.
Hey, Commissioners, thank you, thank you for the time today. Joe Oakes, again, Pulse Night Law Firm. We represent Goddard Housing LLC, which was probably the impetus for this conversation and the policy put in place. Want to be very clear, I think Chairman Beatty clarified this, we're talking in the context of policy today, not this specific project. I'm happy to answer questions about this project, that project, that development plan, that development agreement, they have not been approved by city yet, and they go before city on April 1st. That could start the clock and get this going. But with that in mind, I don't have specific objections. I'm not here to pick apart the policy you all put together today. I'm just here to ask that you don't rush to apply that policy that was put together on the fly to this project and, and/or change the rules midstream. I, I think there's some, I totally get that county needs a framework to evaluate the many requests it'll get in the future. I just don't want to have to have those, there's minimum data requirements, there's a rigorous risk assessment that's involved. Those things also take time. This project needs to move now. And I don't, I don't want this to hold us up or, or stumble our toes. Often, often in, I'm, we work in both sides of the Kansas City metro, a lot of times in Johnson County, there've been, there's been times when policies are adopted after an application's already been approved. I think our ask is that you accept this project, which has already had an application pending, which has already had Secretary of Commerce approval, which has already received this through, with the city's help, grant funding contingent on, not contingent, largely influencing, influenced by establishing that R H I D. I would just ask that we, we not rush to apply this, this policy to the project that was put together on the fly, which could hold up approval and put the project in jeopardy. So again, with that in mind, I'm asking that you add language to any approving resolution, whether that be today or whether that be two weeks in the future, to accept applications that have already been filed. That's not to say we won't be good partners and have a conversation with you all about the questions you have about our project, about the specific numbers. Commissioner Howe, I appreciate you, you know, ballparking some of those today. I'd be hesitant to have too detailed conversations on the numbers right now, but I, I largely agree with what you're saying. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm a bit kind of rambling at this point, but I did want to bring up one last important point. Despite the fact that this program was at one point called rural housing, it's now being utilized in communities large and small across the state. We brought up Johnson County. I think Commissioner Meister, the project that you talked about, that, that has an application pending, that's De Soto, is that what you're referring to?
Spring Valley.
Oh, Spring Hill. Spring Hills, yeah. Yep, Spring Hills. So that would have been the first that was approved in Johnson County back in December 2022. We helped with that project. We were involved in some of those conversations early on. At that point, county did not have a formal R H I D policy, but we worked closely with them to get that done. So let me open up what, what questions you all have for me, and then we can go from there.
Well, I'm sure there's a few, so. Thank you, Joe. Commissioner Howe.
All right. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Counselor, for the update. So I ma, I mentioned just a moment ago, the idea that you could have your hearing on, on April 1st and suspend taking action on that hearing to, to a point that you felt like you, you want to go ahead and move forward. You could do that on April 1st, which puts pressure on us. And to Commissioner Dennis's point, if we don't have a policy in place, he's already stated his, his opinion, he probably would be less likely to support that if we don't have a policy in place. And, and maybe others would. But I, I guess my point would be this, that's your choice to make sure that if you decide you want to go forward, there's a risk there that it may not be approved, simply because there's not a policy that's been approved by the county. If you decide to give us that time and, and bring that to us at a later date, it might have a, maybe a, a policy that would give us a, if you will, a, a reason to vote for it, potentially. But I think that's your choice. I guess my point would be this, we're not voting on your project today, because it's not in front of us today. And so again, I'm trying to get back, get back to the policy here. But my, my delay today, again, is not in reference to your particular project. You, you could do whatever you want to do, understanding those, those aspects of what's going on here. If we delay this by two or three weeks, get this through the commission in three weeks, and you guys have moved forward, I guess we'll have to deal with that when that happens. I mean, that, that's your choice. We're all ready, we're okay with that, right? You make a choice to do it on April 1st or a later date, your choice. And you understand that, right? Okay. My, again, to your project, if you did bring that forward without this policy, my biggest concerns right now are our financial exposure for the project, for all the government, government agencies, but especially Sedgwick County Government and our fire district. And then the timeframe for the repayment of that. And again, intent, the, the clarity that that, that incentive is for specific infrastructure. What is that infrastructure? I want that defined. So i, if that project came to us today without this policy, but those things were in that presentation to the commission, I still might be inclined to vote for it, lacking a policy. Because it still makes sense to me that that is reasonable at that, at that time. So with that, with, with that in mind, I still think my motion is reasonable. It doesn't change your options. You, you have options, you can do whatever you feel is best. We're going to do, we're going to do what we're going to do. And you guys are going to do what you're going to do. And if, and if you bring us a, a project proposal before we get this policy approved, you, you never know what might happen, right? That's, you'll have to see what happens. But I still think my motion is reasonable with that understanding. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. There is a motion on the table. I want to direct some traffic here. Justin, do you have any additional thoughts?
Yes, I, I did want to make a couple of comments. Regarding to Mr. Oakes's comments, I, I think first off, it's worth noting that today, by statute, there is an ability for this board, whether we adopt a policy today or not, or before anything is considered to make an adverse effect finding. So that statutory power exists today. That is the standard rule that applies on these matters. The policy that Brent Shelton's produced today and discussed with you is fleshing out how adverse effect would be analyzed by staff when these come in. It would be a, a tool for staff to use and for the board to use in considering these matters. So I would note that if the board would add something into the policy that says they're not going to consider that policy to apply to that, you would still statutorily, when this comes forward, have the option of considering adverse effect. And you'd be using a very similar analysis to what's already in the policy, I would imagine, but that's up to the will of the board. So, and, and to the comment that the rules would be changing midstream, I'd point out that, as the manager mentioned, Commissioner Dennis mentioned, it was late February when the county's been consulted on any of these projects. I know we're here about a policy in general. The, the primary rule on this is the statute. That statute's been known to everyone, you know, that's applying here for the last year. So I don't think that that's changing the rule, the rule's been there by statute. So I would just point that out in terms of, this isn't something where the county already had a policy, and then we're changing the rules midstream. It would just be refining how we're looking at adverse effect. I'd be happy to answer any questions on that that you might have.
Okay.
But thank you.
Helpful insight. Okay. Commissioner Meister.
Thank you, Chairman. It doesn't, doesn't matter to me if Goddard brings something to us tomorrow, then we'll just consider it. So I don't, I'm not stuck on waiting three weeks or having a policy today or not. I want to, I don't see how, I've got a few questions on the policy that I'm not sure we'd be able to vote up or down today on the policy. And if three weeks is the number, that's, that's fine, too. I don't, anyway, but getting back to the policy. So Brent, on, on page two of the policy at the top section, policy statement, and, and I, and I see you've incorporated some of the stuff from our Monday meeting, so thank you. So it is, so in the middle of that paragraph, it says Sedgwick County is predisposed to support urban infill efforts over suburban sprawl. So that's just, your intent is to guide us in, in our policy to think we, we want to give prioritized thoughts to urban, to urban infill? So we're not, you're not eliminating suburban sprawl, you're just saying priority? Is that what's the intent?
That was what we heard as a preference from the commission. Stuck it in the policy as a preference statement. That's all it is.
So one change, potentially, could be in our policy. We could just say we want to support urban infill efforts in this program only, if the commission wanted to dialogue about that and, and leave it like it is, or as we talked Monday, support urban infill. Anyway, so I just point that out. I probably okay with being supportive of your language, but I really want to focus on, I, I think developers would be more incentivized to go suburban sprawl instead of coming into where there's housing shortage in those that are underserved. So I think that creates, so let me ask another question. In that same paragraph, we say for a period of five years with an option for an additional five years. So we have a 10-year quasi-cap. And, but in the last page, the very last paragraph, item G, you say statutorily authorized to 25 years in term will be kept to a minimum. Is that conflicting language? We say 10 years, and now we say 25 later on?
Well, it's statutorily authorized to run for up to 25 years, but we want these to be kept to a minimum.
Okay.
So the guideline was up to five with additional option for up to five. That's what we would, what I heard is a priority for consideration today.
Okay. So that's not in conflict, Mr. Attorney?
Thank you. I, I don't believe that's in com, I think you read the two together to essentially say that, the first part would be that five plus five, and essentially the up to 10 years would be kind of an outward cap of, if that policy was adopted in term. And, and keep in mind, this policy would not be binding on the board. You'd have to consider each one of these applications on a case-by-case basis on its own merits. But that would be the policy that would be in place there. And then later, when you noted on page five, I think that would be noting an intent or a preference to keep these to a minimum term. But it will, you know, again, with an outside preference of it being 10 years, up to 10 years.
Okay. All right. Then I also noted that when a city, when a city provides us a, an application on page four of five, item C, the first one, so Brent, so you're going to end up having a copy of, of that city's housing plan? Every city will be required to have a housing plan under this?
I think that, yeah, we, I don't know if it's a requirement or definitely a strong preference, but.
Oh, it says additional considerations.
I would rather see that, that the city's housing plan is guiding the development, subject to some sort of a strategic agenda, as opposed to a developer saying, I need some money to make this project work.
And I do note, it does say additional considerations, so we're not requiring a city to have a housing plan?
No, but I think that would, if.
Be a consideration?
Strong consideration, yeah.
Okay, so another couple of things, and then, um, in the incentive program, I think it's for the public, we kind of copied this five plus five on our other incentive programs that we've, we've, we kind of followed along with the City of Wichita had done when we did a overall incentive policy and said, all right, these will be five plus five, they'll be reviewed after five to make sure it's on track. Another thing we put in there at the time is, in the shortfall, if the revenue does not hit it, that, oh, we don't have anything in here about personal guarantees of any difference. Or if it's an LLC and they file bankruptcy, then everybody's held, which is historically what has happened in the city. So I would like to consider if there's a shortfall between the revenue versus the, you know, the $2 million we promised, and they're only going to generate a million five personal guarantee by the LLCs would probably be something responsible in our policy. Don't know, again, how they feel. And lastly, well, one comment, and then last, one, two more comments. So apartments versus homes, housing, and I know that our fire guys are here, historically, apartments are not owned by the occupant, and I think, I don't know the data or statistics, but apartment fires are more prevalent than home-owned fires. So there is some pressure on our fire department. I wouldn't mind, given preference, as we saw in our, earlier today, we approved two housing developments that are not apartments, they are housing. So if we're weighing the crisis that we're putting on potentially the fire department, is that a fair statement, Chief, that apartments are more difficult in the fire world than homes? Or is my statement irrelevant? And if it's irrelevant, that's fine, I'm ready to move on. I'm not a fire guy.
Brad Crisp, Fire Marshal, Sedgwick County Fire District, number one. I think your assessment is a fair assessment. Apartment fires in general have different kinds of challenges than what we would typically see in a single-family dwelling. Single-family dwellings are something that we manage, I would say, fairly well, because they're pretty standardized, whereas in apartment building fire, there are other elements to consider, such as proximity of building to building, the total number of occupants, there's generally egress and ingress challenges, or supply challenges, and whatnot. So yeah, I think the statement that you made is generally true, that those do take in two different considerations when it comes to emergencies. Also would say that the population density is a different factor as well, not just for fires, but also it increases the likelihood of having other kinds of calls, like medical calls and whatnot, which is the vast majority of what we deal with in the fire district when it comes to call volume or medical emergencies.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying. So maybe we could, just like we did with the statement about preferential, where is it, the predisposed to support urban over, maybe if it's all right with the commission, you could also say predisposition to support housing over apartment housing, something like owner-occupied versus, if, again, that's why I don't know that we're going to be able to vote on anything today without these couple of things I'm pointing out. Lastly, and I'm sorry for the length of time, is there any option that a city itself could take on the revenue shortfall at the county as a quasi-pilot program? The cities, you know, if we're going to lose $40,000 a year in fire and all of our support, could the city have an option? Would that be legal? If they volunteered to say, hey, we understand county, you're this and that, here, we're going to pay you $40,000 a year for this project? Or whatever it is, whatever the number?
A city could allocate property tax revenue to fill a developer's funding gap if they wanted to. It'd be outside of this tool. We couldn't use this tool and then have a city only participate.
That would be a separate agreement or a negotiation?
If we do this, everybody would have to participate.
Okay. That's all my questions. I think we've got a few food for thought, so I don't know that we're going to be able to approve something today, but maybe we need to wait a week or two, as previously stated. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry about the number of questions.
Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. Please interrupt me if I get any of this wrong, because I don't know if I'm just not getting it exactly, but the state makes the rules, and the policy is just a guideline for us to kind of follow, but that doesn't mean that we have to agree with everything on every project within the policy necessarily. And so if we pass the policy today, knowing that it's going to take longer than two to three weeks to have a robust, full, fully analyzed, in-depth policy, if we pass this today, at least we have guidelines, because while we have one project coming, I have heard that there are other projects in the works that will be coming soon. If we can just give people an outline of what to do, knowing that each project has to come before us, and we can approve or deny it based on whatever we feel the discussion needs to be at that time, is that accurate?
I would say that is yes. The policy, and Brent can correct me if I'm wrong, the policy is steeped in what the law reads, what state law, you're right, they make the rules. And this policy is steeped in what that state law is calling for. So, but it does come back to this commission, but a short answer, yes, what you described is true.
Okay. So I guess my concern is, if we push this two or three weeks, are we then going to try and say that the policy that we create in a few weeks is going to be the final policy? Because I feel like if we pass this today, people will know that we are continuing to work on this as we go, as we talk to the other cities, as we have larger discussions and can bring that into what we're doing. I would just hate for us to have nothing to show people as they're going through these processes, when really the state mandates what can happen and what can't happen. I mean, we can look at them, obviously, and all the things that we've been discussing, but I do feel like it would be easier just to pass a policy and update it as we're going, talking to cities, and what that looks like. I mean, we're talking about millions and millions of dollars potentially hitting Sedgwick County or Fire District, and really on the backs of other taxpayers. And so I don't want to do anything that's going to try and shorten the process of time that we need to look at these. I mean, if we're, if we are, as we say we are, which is conservative with our tax dollars, this is, in my opinion, not that. And so I want to make sure we're fully vetting this before we get to passing or not passing these, and I know we have one coming, but I just don't want to rush making sure the policy is perfect and saying we have three weeks to do that. So if we can pass this, knowing that it's a template of work that we need to do with other cities and with other people, then that's great. But I guess I'm just confused on why we would rush something that could potentially have an impact in the way this could have.
And Commissioner Lopez, I'm Justin Wagner, County Counselor, may add a comment that the statute's very broadly worded, adverse effect is undefined. So the statute doesn't say what adverse effect is. There's no case law out there on this, there's no administrative regulations, there's no AG's opinions that define that term. So it's really left to the Board of County Commissioners in each of the 105 counties to decide what that is. But as Brent noted, this policy, if you would adopt it, whether how it's worded or with some amendments, it's not set in stone. You could always gather more input and community feedback, but I think that's, I've heard a lot of comments about that today. So I would note that I think that's an option that you have, is to do that. And I think you would retain discretion on any applications that may come in between now and whenever you change in the future, to say, well, there may be certain provisions in the policy that you're not going to strictly construe on an applicant, with an understanding if they, you know, for example, were one of the first few applications that came in, well, you know, maybe they didn't have these details, but maybe they can get us as many details as they could under the policy. I think that option would be there for the board. Because again, you're not strictly construed and bound by this policy. I do think it's a communication tool, certainly, to community partners as to how they want to proceed with these. But any other questions, Commissioner Lopez?
No, I think that's a great point, because if we can address some of those effects currently that we're seeing, and then we can, of course, add to it going forward, but that's at least some kind of guidelines that would be not happening today. And so we can ask to put something off, maybe they will, maybe they won't, but at the end of the day, we have no, we have no guidelines for our staff to follow. And so I think passing it today and then adapting it or adjusting it as we go, as we have further conversation, would be my preference in this. But of course, you know, it's going to be the majority of the board, but I just think that that would make the most sense, in my opinion, to have something rather than nothing as people are coming up, and as we, I mean, we have one today, and who knows how long it's going to be until we have our second and third one? And I just think, to be fair to everybody, once we do something with one, we're setting a precedence going forward for everything else. And I don't want to rush anything, and I want to make sure that our policy is as robust as it can be, knowing that we have one coming, we have to have something to help guide that conversation, because right now, we just, we don't have it.
Good insight. Commissioner How?
So, thank you, Chairman. Commissioner Meisner made a number of recommended changes today, if I heard them correctly. I didn't keep track of them all, but if we're going to approve this right now, I need to have a clean copy. I don't think I understand exactly what's been proposed for changes. I heard the previous speaker's comments. I don't personally see a reason to push out a policy that we know is not exactly what we want right now, to the argument about changing rules on the fly. If we pass this out today and change it again a month from now, it is essentially kind of like that. I don't know why we would not just push this off a few weeks, clean it up as much as we can, and pass it, and hopefully, that's a good policy. We don't need to make changes, but if we find out a year later, we want to amend the policy. We always have the right to do that. I just don't understand why we would push out a policy that's been, again, it came out publicly today, goodness sakes, and we're going to pass it today? That doesn't make sense. When have we ever done that before? A couple of weeks is reasonable, guys. Let's hear from our cities. Let's respect our cities. I don't think this policy is prime time. It was thrown together quickly, because we felt this project was pushing us. We know this project isn't going to push us. We have the time if we need it. I don't want to take months at this, I think that's not fair to you guys. I think we should do this in a reasonable time fashion. But, you know, Commissioner Meisner's made recommended changes. I agree with him. There's some things he'd like to change. I think his recommendations are reasonable. But why pass this out, knowing we're going to make changes in three weeks? We're going to, I don't want to make sausage from the bench today. We don't like doing that. I think my motion is reasonable, guys. Three weeks away, it's April 10th, it's not that far out. Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure there's even been a second on my motion today.
There has not yet.
Okay, well, maybe we should stop talking about my motion, but I'd like to know what we're doing here, because this has taken a long time, and we need to figure this out.
I agree. Let's get there. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, the previous speaker, excuse me, the previous speaker made it plain that they want us to accept the application that they've got in place, and without any strings or anything dealing with our policy. No, the previous speaker.
Okay, I'm the previous speaker.
Can I go on? Can I go on, please? Thank you. The public speaker stated that they want us to move forward with their application. I don't think that Goddard is ready to look at what we have for a policy. Whatever, if they send us a policy, that sets the precedence for every one of them in the future, and there's going to be a ton of them in the future. So I believe that we need something in place. Yes, it can't, it's not perfect today, but it's at least something that the cities can look at to decide whether or not that they can meet the requirements before they submit something to us. It's a policy. It can be changed. We can start working with the cities. Two or three weeks is not adequate amount of time in order to make sure that this policy is refined as it needs to be. But we have to have something in place so that an imminent application has something to rely on. Move to approve the policy.
Okay.
I'll second.
Do you have a motion and a second? I just want a couple of thoughts here, as we move this thing forward. There's a tough balance, because we need housing. Bottom line. I actually think that housing need in this community is one of the biggest needs we have. We desperately need housing. This is a tool that I see in District Four, my district, I see incredible opportunities, particularly with infill. As I have talked to a couple city council people in Wichita, and shared the ideas around this program, and all of them have said, hey, we need to talk. This is an opportunity. We need housing in a big way. We need infill opportunities in a big way, but we also need to empower our cities in a big way, too. And that's an important thing for me with 20 cities in Sedgwick County, in my purview of county government. There's a balance, though, is we also have to be good stewards of county resources, and we've only got to incent. My opinion is, I want to vote to incentivize things that desperately need incentivized. So the type of housing we're incentivizing is incredibly important to me, incredibly important. So those are just some thoughts. I think we're going to work this thing through. Justin?
Yes, Chairman, sorry to interrupt. I just did want to clarify, I know Commissioner How made a motion. I didn't hear at any point in a second, I just wanted, I might be good for the record, if any commissioners were intending to second that, I didn't hear any at any point in time. But I think, lacking that, I think Commissioner Dennis's motion is the current motion. Correct, Madam Clerk?
I just have a deferral from him for three weeks, and I only, he motioned to go ahead with the policy in a second.
Okay.
So you did have a motion and a second on the motion to approve the policy. I was just double checking to make sure we're on the same page. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the policy. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Meisner?
No.
Commissioner How? Or, excuse me, Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner How?
No.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Beatty?
No.
Commissioner How, would you like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the vote that was just taken. I believe that this is a good policy, it's just not quite ready for adoption. And I think to take a few weeks at this is respectful to the process. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we would defer this item until April 10th, and bring it back with, hopefully, some updates, that we hopefully can reconsider this policy at that time, and that's my motion. Thank you.
Okay. I'll second that motion, and I want to get to work with our cities, have robust conversations with our cities, with SAC, with WABA, with everyone that needs to be included in these conversations. So we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Meisner?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
No.
Commissioner How?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
No.
Chairman Beatty?
Aye. So the motion carries. Okay, we have a request to take a 10-minute break. So we're going to take that, and we're going to start back 11:40, we're going to start sharp, and we're going to push, we have a couple of minutes, we're going to get to our fire agenda, and we're going to work ourselves through this. So thank you. Let's get back to work. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item I, reconsideration of item one of the minutes of the February 29th, 2024 meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts, Road Improvements R370 Public Works.
Next, Parker Guy in Sedgwick County, Joe Thomas.
Well, good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Good to see you. This item was, as was mentioned, was part of the, uh, recommendation of the February 29th regular meeting of the Boards of Bids and Contracts. And it was deferred, uh, on March the 6th pending a CIP amendment, uh, approval. And that approval will be on consi-, uh, well, hopefully the approval will be on the Consent Agenda, item P. And it's contingent on that. So with that contingency, this is the recommendation, and it is to accept the bid from Phillips Southern Electric Company Incorporated in the amount of $333,939. So I'll be happy to try to answer any questions. I recommend approval.
Okay, any questions or comments for Joe? Seeing none, I move to, uh, approve item I, uh, I'm sorry. I move to approve item one of the minutes of the February 29th, 2024 meeting of Boards, Bids, and Contracts. A second. Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Beatty?
Aye. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item J, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on March 14th, 2024.
For the record, Joe Thomas, again, Purchasing Director. Uh, these are the seven items that are the results of the regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on March the 14th, and we are seeking your approval. First item is the Bridge Improvements Project B 509 for Public Works. Recommendation is to accept the low bid from Claver Construction Company in the amount of $379,503. Item number two is Sedgwick County's Adult Detention Facility, the Secondary Domestic Water Main for Project Services. This recommendation is to accept the bid from Mies Construction Incorporated in the amount of $195,605. Item number three is the On Call Carpet Services for various departments. This recommendation is to accept the overall low bid from Harry Street Carpet LLC and establish contract pricing at the rates that are listed for a period of one year with two one-year options to renew. Item number four, Fit Gap Analysis for Clerk's Office. Recommendation is to accept the quote from Augmentum Technologies, and this is in the amount of $350,000. Item number five, ESNS Backup and Coin Cell Batteries, and this is for the DS 200 tabulators and the Express Vote Ballot Marking Devices for Election Office. This recommendation is to accept the quote from Election Systems and Software in the total amount of $215,600. Item number six, Assistance with the Evaluation and Performance Measurement Plan of the Overdose Prevention OD2A Local Grant for the Health Department. And the recommendation is to accept the proposal from the University of Kansas Medical Center Research Institute Incorporated in the amount of $242,600, and that's for a contract period that goes through August 31st of 2028. And our final item, item seven, is Training for First Responders and the Community on Substance Use Disorder and Overdose Prevention as part, again, of the OD2A Local Grant for Health Department. And this recommendation is to accept the proposal from Syrah Health Corporation in the amount of $38,000, and is for a contract period, uh, through August 31st of 2028. So I'll be happy to try to answer any questions. Our staff is here to do that, and, and I do recommend approval of the seven items.
Okay, thanks, Joe. Commissioner Dennis?
Uh, thank you. Although I'm not opposed to it, I want to preface it with that. Uh, please, I caught you in the hall one day trying to understand item seven. And I thought we needed to get together a little bit more before the bid board, uh, came to us. I, I don't under-, I still don't understand how that $1 makes a difference because, and you said it wasn't because it was bid. Uh, so kind of explain that process to me, because I'm not aware of how we did this.
Yes, sir. So the paradigm is whether it's a bid or proposal, how we look at it. So if it's a bid, you're correct. The determining factor is the cost. So had it been a dollar, technically, yes, you would go with that. In this case, it's not a bid, but what's called, I mean, what's a, is a proposal. And, uh, on the minutes, um, there, as you note, there are six items, criteria that are listed. And so Evaluation Committee gets together, and they go over the, they evaluate the proposals that are given based on the six criteria. Now, on the six criteria, each one of them holds a different amount of points. Give you an example. So the responses to Section 13, the operational form, carried the most weight. It had 30 points. Uh, the ability to meet the scope of work, that was Section 12, that was 20 points. And then we looked at the qualification expertise as outlined in Section 14, that held 25 points. The references that were given that we checked were 10 points. And then the point you made about pricing, which also included Section 15 budget narrative, was only 10 points. And then the final was the completion of the proposal at five points. So the overall score was 100 points with a cost, which in this case was a dollar difference, only covering or, uh, being 10% of the overall scoring. So the reward that was given was based on an overall score in which Syrah Health was the higher score. And that would
Well, as I recall, I don't have in front of me right now. You gave what the points were, but didn't, didn't, I, I don't recall seeing how that you evaluated them to show that one was higher than the other in our backup material.
Okay. I, I sent a copy, but I can do that. I can send you a copy of the actual points for each one of those to give you the total, sir.
You don't need to do that, as long as you tell me that you did an evaluation and this one was higher.
Yes, sir.
And I didn't see that when, when I was trying to look at the backup material. It, only thing I saw was there was $1 difference, and that didn't make sense to me, especially when one of them was KU and were to support our local, uh, university a lot more than some out-of-state organization. So, uh, that's uh, it just didn't make sense to me as I was reading it, and I just needed some clarification. I appreciate it.
Appreciate the question. Thank you.
Very good. Good question. Uh, other questions or comments for Joe? Seeing none, I want to, I'll make a motion to approve the recommendations of the Board of Bids and Contracts.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Beatty?
Aye. Very good.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, I want to pause because we have a very special guest that's joining us today that has been waiting patiently. Um, so I'm gonna pause the Board of County Commission meeting and call to order uh, the Wednesday, March 20th, meeting of the governing body of Fire District Number One. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Meitzner? Commissioner Dennis?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner Lopez?
Present.
Chairman Beatty?
Present. Next item, please.
Public Agenda.
Seeing none on the public agenda. Next item.
Consideration of Minutes, Item A, Fire Meeting Minutes of February 21st, 2024.
Commissioners, we've all had a chance to review these meeting minutes. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the Fire Meeting Minutes of February 21st, 2024. Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Beatty?
Aye. Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Chairman, uh, County Manager Tom Stolz recommending approve, uh, approval of Consent Item B.
Okay, we see Consent Item B. Um, as we go to approve this, is the, is the individual or the furry friend that's here that we're gonna be discussing? I think we deserve a chance to get eyes on him. Or her, I'm not sure yet. Him, okay. Hey, Brad. What do we got here?
Commissioners, Brad Crisp, good morning, by the way. Brad Crisp, Fire Marshal of Sedgwick County Fire District Number One. Uh, I would like to introduce you to Benny. Benny is a male, uh, yellow lab from the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms, and Explosives Accelerant Detection K-9 Program. We're very excited about this opportunity. I know we briefed each of you in the two-two-and-one several weeks ago, but, uh, this is really a unique opportunity for us. There's only 62 of these K-9s certified like this in the entire world, and we're fortunate enough to have the opportunity, pending your approval, to have this kind of resource here in Sedgwick County. So we're just really excited for the opportunity. Benny's been meeting everybody, uh, up in the back there during the breaks, and we'd really appreciate your support for this effort.
Yeah, well, Benny has made a good friend with our CFO, so I, uh, I, I think you have briefed all of us, and I think we see the need, and we also see the, the capacity to be good community partners with this, with this asset. So we appreciate Benny. We appreciate everybody that's taking part in this program, and and, uh, and I will make a motion to brew, to approve Consent Item B.
I will happily second that.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Uh, just comment that Benny must be very smart to have the CFO is a, is a good contact. He's, he's very strategically smart. Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Beatty?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Appreciate you guys. Welcome to the team, bud.
Picture?
Madam Clerk, next item.
Other.
Do we have any other for the Fire District? Seeing none. Next item?
Executive Session.
We have no executive session, so I'll formally adjourn the Fire meeting and, uh, reconvene the meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Manager Stolz?
Uh, Chairman and Commissioner Tom Stolz, again, County Manager's Office, recommending approval of Consent Items K through double A with the exception of R.
Okay. We're gonna pull item R off for discussion, so I'll make a motion to approve Consent Agenda, Items K through double A with the exception of item R.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner? Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Beatty?
Aye. Okay, Manager Stolz?
Uh, Chairman and Commissioner, item R is the, this has been on the agenda for, uh, a few times. This is the approval of the aging mill levy contracts for the, uh, senior center programs which were voted to be funded by the commission last August. Um, over the last couple of weeks, it's been clear that a couple of commissioners at least want to discuss this particular item and maybe make some amendments to it moving forward, so that's why we pulled it today for the discussion.
Okay. Uh, let's bring it back to the bench. You need a discussion on item R?
Yes.
Commissioner Howell?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, thank you for the chance to speak. I'm gonna hand out a, uh, written amendment. You guys can have a copy. This is, this is for the, uh, clerk. You go over this with the, uh, and go over this with everybody. I want to say Commissioner Dennis and I have, have discussed this with passion for a number of years, and one of the arguments he has made in the past is that there's a chicken and egg problem. If you don't have the revenue, how do you increase the services? You're measured about having services, but you don't have the revenue to get there. How do you, how do you solve that problem? Intended to address that. I can say that three of these senior centers have demonstrated over and over and over again, uh, and have pled with the county for years to have some type of, uh, consideration. They are well-used, very popular, providing senior services, uh, to their communities. I know these are senior centers, but they do provide, uh, lots of senior services. Uh, many of these senior centers actually have a clientele that goes well beyond their Many of these senior centers actually have a clientele that goes well beyond their tax base. Derby is a great example. Derby receives seniors from other states even, certainly other counties, and without question, other cities. Derby does a good job, they, we provide a lot of funding to Derby, but they provide about twice as much, actually more than that, more than twice as much that we, that we provide to the county. And of course, there's also some fees they charge to the seniors for some things that they provide. But that is a, a good example of a, a partnership between a city and a, and the senior centers as they operate, and the county itself. Every city, except for those in Wichita, has provided some support to their senior centers. I don't know about Goddard today, I wish I would have asked those que, the question before they left our audience today, but at the end of the day, every city has provided some type of support to their city, to their senior centers, albeit sometimes it's a small amount of money, but at least there is something. Orchard Park is on this list, they don't receive anything from, from the city of Wichita. Let me talk about a couple of these real quickly. Let me focus on Clearwater, Hayesville, and Oclon for just a few minutes. We appreciate hearing from Andre Cisco today. She spoke to us today, she's actually spoken to us, I believe, the last two budget cycles, has come before us pleading for some type of help. She spoke to us, I believe, twice this last year since the budget cycle. She spoke to us on February the 15th, and she spoke to us again today. And she is an improvement district elected official. She, she doesn't, she, of course, she's part-time, she has other job, another job, but she serves in the role as an elected official for the Oclon Improvement District. Let me talk about the numbers for Oclon for just a minute. I believe right now, the base funding for Oclon is $35,000 a year. They, if the formula was not rescinded years ago, and they had met performance measures, which they are meeting performance measures, again, I, since we're not really collecting those any longer, it's really hard to say that definitively, but they, they met them back in the day, and they're doing as much today as they did back then, so I believe that, with that question, I believe that they are meeting performance measures. I would suggest we bring them up to the next level. Again, according to the old formula, that would be $57,000, that's an increase of $22,000. Let me talk about Oclon for just a little bit, a little bit further. One mill in Oclon generates $8,100 roughly. It's actually a little bit more, $8,157 and change. They are currently at 23.561 mills property tax for Oclon Improvement District. Back in 2022, it was 17.266 mills. They've had to increase their mill levy by 6.295 mills, I believe, because of the economy. Their assessed value doesn't change very much, I mean, housing prices have gone up everywhere, but not so much in Oclon. So their mill levy has gone up as a, as a consequence of the economy. That increase of the 6.295 mills is an increase of about $51,348 to the Oclon Improvement District. The Oclon Improvement District provides services to the residents of Oclon, however, much like other senior centers, they have people from all over the place. Wichita, even Derby, and Hayesville, and other places come to Oclon to receive senior services as well as socialization and senior, you know, senior centers provide a lot of, a lot of different things. They're not just centers, but they actually provide socialization opportunities, but they also provide services as well. The entire Oclon Improvement District actually is, right now, I believe, about, a little bit less than $200,000 total revenue for the Oclon Improvement District total. And they, they're taking a, a good portion of their money as a subsidy to the senior center, because it, it struggles on its own to make it. If you're going to charge fees to these folks, these are truly, you talk about low income, these are some of the folks around the county, if you don't know, these are pretty, fairly low-income people who are receiving services there. It's hard to get fees out of, out of that population, because they don't have a lot, okay? If you want to see, you know, where does the county provide the greatest services, it's really where the greatest need happens to exist. And this is a good example. Sorry about Clearwater for just a minute. They have a assessed value of about $22.3 million, a one mill generates about $22,000. Their mill levy is about 64 mills for the city of Clearwater, and they do provide some, some support to their senior center from the city. Because of where it's located, I don't know that they have as much transient residents getting services from there, because it's, it's more remote from larger populations. So they may provide services more to the, to the residents of actual, actual Clearwater. And then, and then in Hayesville, oh, by the way, Clearwater is at $18,000. If they meet those performance measures, and I think they have, that would be increased by $17,000 to a total of $35,000. Hayesville is at 35 right now, increase them to 57, just like Oclon, that's an increase of $22,000. Their assessed value is $84.5 million, one mill generates $84,000, and they're at 41.9 Altogether, if you, if you wanted to include all three of those together, it'd be, it would be right at 61, is that right? 61 million, I'm sorry, 61,000, $61,000 would be shared between those three senior centers as an increase in funding. I will just say this, the base funding that's in item, item R today, I support the base funding, except for these recommended changes. To Commissioner Dennis's point, there are four senior centers in District Three, there is a new one in Goddard, I don't know the status of Goddard today, they're receiving currently $6,000, which is more than, more than Bentley and Cheney are currently getting, which is interesting. But if you want to, if you wanted to, if you will be perspective and say, we, we don't know about your performance measures, to Commissioner Dennis's point, we'd like to offer you, if you want, an increase of $13,000, that's the, again, according to the old formula, we bump them up, I'm sorry, excuse me, an $8,000 increase, we bump them up from $5,000 to $13,000. I don't have their assessed value and their, and their mill levy numbers in front of me, but you can imagine, it's, it's about similar to Clearwater and Hayesville. At the end of the day, I, I think it's appropriate for us to offer these four senior centers an opportunity to go up in funding, again, so that they can provide services and hopefully attract those folks in their communities that need these types of services. If they meet those performance measures in 24 months, or should say two calendar years, then I would like to leave them at that in future budgets going forward. If they don't meet the performance measures in two calendar years, then the downside, that's, you know, I would apply this to all of these, actually, to bring them back down to the current level of funding that's presented in item R today for base level funding. So that is essentially what I'm trying to do. Total cost for District Three would be another $61,000. So for District Three, I'm offering $61,000 increase, and for District Two, an increase of $39,000 for two senior centers, and for District Five, an increase of $22,000. The total for all three, all three districts, all seven senior centers would be a total of $122,000. And for record, that's a 0.018 mill increase for the county. That's 21 cents per year on a $100,000 home in the city, in Sedgwick County. For District Three, the dollars is equivalent to .009 mills. District Two is equivalent to .006 mills, and District Five is equivalent to .003 mills. Total, total for the entire county is .018 mill increase. Today, they are at .385 mill levy equivalent for aging services, that's what's in the budget book today. In 2025, the, the estimate going forward would be a, apparently, apparently, just a little bit level, it's a small drop of .004 mills, going from .385 to .381 mills. And future years outside of that, it actually continues to drop a little bit further. So I would, when, I will make a motion, I would like to go ahead and read this in its entirety today. I move that we transfer budget authority of $122,000 from BOCC contingency to the Aging Department of General, General Fund Budget. I further move that we amend the proposed 2024 contracts to increase the annual funding to seven senior centers in the following amounts. Clearwater, from $18,000 to $35,000 for a change of $17,000. Hayesville, currently at $35,000, increased to $57,000 for a change of $22,000. Oclon is currently at $35,000, increased to $57,000 for an increase of $22,000. Bentley, currently at $5,000, increasing to $13,000, which is an increase of $8,000. Cheney, which is at $5,000, will be increased to $13,000, that's an increase of $8,000. Mount Hope is at $18,000, increasing them to $35,000, which is an increase of $17,000. And then Orchard Park in Wichita, they're currently at $57,000, increasing them to $85,000, which is an increase of $28,000. While not included in the contracts approved today, the intention would be to allocate these amounts to the senior centers, this is still my motion. While not included in the contracts today, approved today, the intention would be to allocate these amounts to senior centers in 2025 aging budget as well. If a senior center on this list reaches a performance measure spelled out under the old senior center formula for higher tier placement by March 20th, 2026, they will be entitled to receive the same level of funding for calendar, calendar fiscal years 26 and 27. If they are unable to demonstrate compliance with those higher level performance measures that by, by that March 20th, the 2026 date, they will automatically be revert back to the funding level that was proposed in today's agenda item for the 2026 and 2027 year calendar, calendar fiscal years. And as I've said quite a lot there, Mr. Chairman, but that is my motion today. Thank you.
Okay.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second? Any further discussion?
I have one.
Commissioner Lopez?
I, I just have a question, because the proposal is to come out of the Board of County Commissioners contingency, can we just have an overview of what, how much is in that, so everybody knows, how much we typically spend annually, how much is usually left over, just so everybody is more aware of why it's coming from that place?
Tom, is it okay if I talk? Okay. Good afternoon. Good morning, Commissioners, no, good afternoon. Lindsay Poreso, your CFO, thanks for letting me pet the dog earlier. To your questions, we are in a strange situation in 2024, because you all have already adopted a budget. So to Commissioner Howell's point, all of the funding for senior centers typically lives within the aging mill levy fund, but because that budget has been set already, it is far too late to increase the amount of budget authority. So we need to make these additional payments out of the county's general fund, and we need to use a contingency. So there are several contingencies that are available to us, but because this is driven by commission recommendation, we tend to use the BOCC contingency then. That is typically budgeted at around $350,000. It was a little bit less going into 2024, because that was where we took some budget authority associated with your mill levy rate reduction last year. So there's more than enough to pay for this additional $122,000, but then the intent would be, under this motion, that for 2025 and beyond, this would go into your aging tax fund and, and would increase that overall allocation that we would make to senior centers.
And do we, and do we typically, how much do we typically spend out of that contingency annually?
Typically, we don't use a whole lot of, out of contingencies. I used to say never, but then 2021 hit with COVID, and we depleted all of our contingencies 100%. But rarely do we dip into that, but for extenuating circumstances like that here with COVID-19.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. Commissioner Howell and I have had a very professional disagreement for some time, and I appreciate the fact that he's listening to what my concerns are, to make sure that the citizens in my district are treated the same as citizens in all the other districts. With that said, we did pass a budget back in, for 2024 already, and I have issues with us suddenly deciding to change the budget once it's established. Now, if this motion should pass, I'm also concerned about dumping $61,000 into some very needing senior centers, because I'm not sure they're ready for it. We, we haven't asked them. So if the motion should pass, I don't want any of the $61,000 addition to any of the senior centers, I want it to go into a, a fund that Lindsay Poreso will establish in aging. And Annette, along with some members of my Citizens Advisory Board, because they all reside in, in District Three, would then accept some suggestions from the senior centers on how they could use that funding, and we could then allocate it based on what their needs are, rather than just putting a lot of money into certain senior centers without any thought about how that, that goes about. But again, I'm not in favor of this motion, because it goes against our budgeting process. So I would much rather us fund this on item R, just right out of our budget like we normally do, it's part of our normal budget process. And as we work on the 2025 budget, I'd be more than happy to work with the Commissioners to add $61,000 to District Three, and again, to make sure that we have that ready for the, the senior centers to be able to use that funds accurately. We got 200 and some million dollars during COVID, and some of that money was not spent wisely. I think everybody can admit to that, okay? When you get a whole bunch of money, it, you're kind of in a hurry to spend it, and we don't always do it the best way that we could do it, and we don't get the best bang for the buck. So that's what my concern is. So I don't know if this motion will pass or not, but if it does pass, I want to make sure that the motion is rewritten a little bit, so that the money doesn't go directly to the four senior centers in my district. But I do want to make an alternate motion that we approve item Romeo on the consent agenda.
I'll second the alternate.
Yeah. Why don't we deal with that first, the motion and a second? Is that okay, or do you want to?
As I understand it, it was a substitute motion with a second to approve the contracts, the 18 contracts as they are in the agenda, is that correct?
That was my motion.
Okay, there's a substitute motion and a second. Commissioner Howell, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Chairman, for that. By the way, if the, I'm going to vote against the substitute motion, and the intent is I want to deal with my, my motion first. If the substitute, if the substitute motion fails, we back on the base motion, which I made a moment ago. And if that fails, I'll make a motion to approve item R, just similar to what Commissioner Dennis has just made. So to be clear, if I, there'll be another motion. If my motion fails, we'll come back to essentially the same motion that Commissioner Dennis just made. It's an issue of order here. Understand, if my motion was to fail, we would still be back on the bill, so to speak, we could still make a motion to approve item R. Hayes wants to deal with it before we get to what I've suggested today. Let me just say this, whether Commissioner Dennis thinks his senior centers are ready for $61,000 worth of assistance or not, I actually am a little surprised he's not currently aware of the status, because I'm hearing, I'm hearing from senior centers on the south part of Wichita, pretty hard. I can tell you right now, Oclon is essentially doing everything they can to get this fixed, and I appreciate that very much. They have done a good job communicating, if you want to call it that. It is, it's more than communicating, they have, they have loudly communicated, and I get the message, they're right. They need help, and they don't need help for a computer, they don't need help for an exercise ball, they don't need help for objects in the room, they need help for operations. So when we had this fund in the past, they, these senior centers were allowed to apply for specific things, and of course, in the, there was a granting that was done from a, a chunk of money that went out to senior centers for one-time funding for certain things, they enhancements in their, in their respective agencies. I don't think that's what this is, that's not what we need right now. These three senior centers, Clearwater, Hayesville, and Oclon, need some help with operations. And here's the reason why. Inflation is just eating their lunch. We demand they have a director. How are you going to pay a director when the entire Oclon Improvement District only has less than $200,000 in their entire budget? It's time for us to give them a little bit of help. You know, manager, curiously, what's your authority as a manager, you can approve up to what, $50,000?
$50,000 on commodities, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting you do that today. My point is, is he approves things frequently, you don't even, we don't even necessarily hear about it, at $50,000. You know, we, we approved today an audio enhancement to juvenile corrections, which I am convinced is actually not going to work. It was over $200,000. It's more of an experiment, in my personal opinion. I don't know that that was the best use of money. I think that we should, there's other ways of doing this for less money. But yet we did it as an experiment, in my personal opinion. We're talking about $61,000. And I'm not saying this is not a small, it's not saying this is not a lot of money. It is. But after years and years and years of arguing, we're going to still push this off? You know, the last time we brought this up during the budget, I went and talked about this at length during the budget. In fact, partly why I voted no on the budget was this very reason. Because I can't get movement on something that's, frankly, I've spent literally hours and hours and hours arguing with people, trying to get some kind of consideration that we get this thing to move off this point. We defer it, we talk about it later, nothing happens. Talked about this during the budget retreat, right? Great discussion. Here we are again. If you want the conversation to go away, let's do something substantial. If his, if the senior centers in District Three don't need the money, they don't have to take the money. I think you offer to them, say, we'd like to see you guys offer better services to your region of your area. Here's somebody to help you get there. If you don't think you need the money, don't think you can make that happen, please don't take the money. But I'm responding to the chicken and egg problem. We were told over and over, they'll never get there because they don't have the money to get there. Well, now the money's on the table to get there. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to vote no on the substitute motion, understanding though, if my motion fails, we'll come back to it because I'll make the same motion that he made earlier. But I think it's time for us to move off this point. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. We have a substitute motion and a second. Does anybody want to have comment before those two? Okay. Commissioner Meitzner?
Thank you. And yes, it's been years of discussion that some of us have had to observe and listen to. I think this is, this is very inappropriate that we have a budget discussion through the year. We approve a budget in August and then six months, eight months later, a particular item in the budget is now laid before us. First time I've seen this and I heard about it last night, but I hadn't seen the numbers. I have no idea the validity of these numbers. I heard your whole explanation. I don't know why. It's the will of the commission during the budget process and it's the will of the vote in August. And now we have to take the money from somewhere. It's ironic. We also, in the same time we approved the budget, we approved the mill levy. So I don't know how much, do we want to reconsider increasing the mill levy, $122,000 to make up for this? Since we made a decision in August on the budget and a mill levy, why don't it just correspond and raise the mill levy, $122,000 as well? And future commissioners will know that any time during the year, you can bring up a budget item for reconsideration. I just think it's a bad way to govern. And I agree with Commissioner Dennis about his suggestion to review this again. Staff, I don't think has had a chance to validate these numbers, I assume. Maybe finance has. I don't understand, for instance, even the tier structure, the senior center formula. I think it includes attendance, but who keeps the attendance? Can they pad the numbers to say, I had 100 attendance today when only 10 were there and I'm going to submit that to whatever, among many other things that's in this senior center formula that somehow gets somebody to the higher level or not? Anyway, if this gets down, and Commissioner Howell, if you, if this motion fails and we bring back your motion, I've heard you say emphatically that this is a solution and you said the discussion will go away. So if this motion fails and we go back to your motion, I might be for it if you include a motion in the motion that says this discussion will go away, to use your quote. That being said, and if we get into this during, one final thing is what I am understanding about the senior centers, which is a fraction of senior services as far as cost, I'm not so sure that we couldn't get more service to our seniors if we took this kind of money and bought memberships to YMCA's where they can actually have swimming, organized exercise, all kinds of things that they don't have at the senior centers. And I would rather throw that budget and let any senior that qualifies at the senior center, keep a desk there at a senior center, make application, we give them membership to Y. They'll get a lot more out of it than apparently what goes on at the senior centers. And they still can have senior services because it's 95% of the budget is senior services. That being said, it's very frustrating. And I think it sets precedent that any commissioner can write up a one-pager to change the budget in the middle of a calendar year, in the budget year. So with that, I'll be supportive of Commissioner Dennis's motion.
Okay. Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. I do want to just hit on a couple of things. So the reason why I'm advocating for Clearwater and Hayesville in particular are because when we froze these levels, they had hit all of the requirements they needed for the time amount they needed to be moved up to the next level. And when we froze them, we froze them at the level that they were at originally and not at the level that they should have been moved to at that point in time. And because of that, they had done all of that work for the two years prior to, to reach those levels, you know, which cost more to them to do. And then they were not able to get that higher level funding. And so that's really where I'm at with the two that are in the second district because they really, in my opinion, should have been frozen at the level that they had earned a spot at. And the reason I also think part of this is coming up now is because while we passed the budget, we're just now passing, like, to give the money to the senior centers today or a couple of months ago, whenever it was. So not at the same time. And so it's coming up now because we're passing that now. I wouldn't say that we need to do anything with the mill levy just because we have this fund that's already baked into the budget that can be used for situations that are come up, I think, similar to this. And the other problem we're seeing and what's really got a lot of our senior centers frustrated at the moment is we've done great things through COVID money that we've received and given them extra dollars for certain things. And so this year, they're seeing an actual decrease in funding and what they've been getting. So that's part of it. But also just to say that over these years, these centers really should have been getting this funding anyway. And so that's where I'm, I get frustrated as well, is that if we were going to freeze, let's freeze it on where they should be, where the level that they had maintained and hit that we asked them to hit to go to the next level, to not move them to that level when we fund, when we froze it and say, we are no longer discussing this. I don't think it's fair to the senior centers that we're in that position. So that's where I think that it's appropriate to move some of these up to the next level just as we continue to have these conversations in budget cycle and looking at what next year looks like. I agree, we need to look at all of them. These ones came out due to what I just mentioned, but also because we're just now trying to actually pay them the dollars that we did pass. And so I do think it's appropriate today to do this. And then I think with the ones that are in District Three, I think that's fully up to Commissioner Dennis on what he feels comfortable. I think that's a great idea if the smaller centers are not ready to just implement something, to put it in something where they can work towards that. I know that the three, Clearwater, Hayesville, and Oklon are ready. They've been begging for these dollars because they're kind of stretched to the point that they can no longer do things and are having to look at, do we have to cut programming now because as costs have gone up, you know, what we've been giving them hasn't? And we've really limited over the last handful of years, these dollars that really should have been in their appropriation anyway. So that's where I'm at with it. I think it's, you know, it's appropriate because there is that contingency to use for items like this. It doesn't wipe it all out either, so it's still there if something were to come up. I don't remember the last time we've used that contingency fully. I know through COVID, there was some access to it, but I don't, beyond that, I don't know of anything. So I'm comfortable with this. I can understand frustrations fully, can understand why people would be upset with this. But I do think there's been enough due diligence on these in particular to move forward with this proposal.
Okay. Appreciate the comments. I'll tell you just briefly before I get to Commissioner Howell, my only heartburn in this is I have three of the four senior centers in my district that I'm telling them, I'm going to address this through the 25 budget cycle and budget discussions. And District Four has zero on this motion because I need to vet some of this stuff out. And there's only $350,000 in that contingency from the county commission contingency. I think if all of us, I think everybody has senior centers that know that there's some needed help there because of inflation. And are we going to staff, can we staff this conversation to where we have a separate significant discussion? Because I have discussions about the tiers too. And if we need to have another conversation about reforming these tiers to make sure that we're supporting senior centers, what is your thought on staffing this topic?
Depending on what you all decide today, we were going to staff on April 16th. If this resolves the issue for now, we can, I still think if you want to take a top-to-bottom analysis of the formula and the history behind it, I still think we're going to need to staff it before we recommend a budget to you.
Okay. Well, can I recommend, Tom, that no matter what happens today, can we keep the April 16th staff meeting on this, in this regard? Or go ahead.
I apologize for interrupting. I have mission.
Sorry. I have mission Wichita all day on the 16th. So I am unavailable that day. If we could have staff for this on a different Tuesday, that would be preferable for me.
We'll need all five commissioners here, so we'll do it at a time we get all five.
So, Tom, no matter what happens here, I think we need to staff this conversation. Lindsay.
If I could. So right now, we cannot make any payments to any of these senior centers that are listed, whether it's these that you're talking about increasing today or the other 11 that are listed. They don't get their 2024 allocations until this commission takes action. So at the very least, we would ask you to approve their base contracts today. Then we can staff and discuss any other changes for '24. But we really need to get some movement so these folks can get some.
And that would be my, that would be my obvious recommendation of vote would be to item R, that we're going to approve item R, move forward on baseline and have a conversation about the incremental adjustments. Because I have some senior centers in my district too that needs to have a significant conversation, but I want to have a conversation about the tiers and understanding that and what could be done there. So Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. I would just like to ask the commission to be aware of the minutes that were passed, the minutes from the meeting that happened on August the 15th, 2018. Commissioner from District Two, previous commissioner, and myself were fighting for this problem clear back then. Same discussion, exactly the same discussion. Commissioner Randrou, Commissioner Ranza, Commissioner Dennis made a motion to freeze the funding during the budget cycle. And that passed a motion of three to two. I have been fighting for this thing since before that 2018 vote. And every single time we have a budget, I bring this up. Every single year, every single time I have an opportunity, this has been up. That's why I said hours. You know, I think we're trying to be professional and respectful to each other. We just have a major disagreement, okay? I would suggest others to vote however they want to vote. That's fine. But we have to at some point deal with the underlying problem. Otherwise, it is going to keep coming back. I'm not going to promise I will never talk about senior funding ever again. That's not fair. But this issue about Oklon goes back since before 2018. I appreciate the fact that Clearwater and Hayesville are desperate for help too. They are. I think other ones may be desperate. But these are the ones that have been speaking to us for years and years and years. They met the performance measures. I don't agree with what happened on that date on August 15th. I voted against that. Those commissioners that did that, two of them are on here any longer. Let me remind us that that formula was created through a very lengthy process of years to develop that formula. And it required performance-based measures. By the way, correct me if I'm wrong, but we did roll out, if you will, an attendance program that's computer-based that's at all senior centers now. So eliminate, to eliminate, if you will, some type of miss, bad information perhaps on who's providing or who's receiving services at these senior centers. We rolled that out.
Annette Graham, Department on Aging and Disabilities. We did purchase MP4, this is the second year, for the management information system. That is not at the senior clubs because a lot of those, several, many of those only operate like a few days a month or once a month. So we purchased that and have implemented that. And the last one that got implemented was La Familia. They were a little late coming on, so they started using that January 1. But what that system does is for that level of senior center above, it provides information on the membership, the daily attendance, the events that they're attending. So it's a swipe card where when they come in, we can know when they're coming in, what kind of events are drawing people in, and what the membership, because they have to have an active membership number. So it's really not, but there's also average weekly attendance that we're able to gather that data because we really needed to have some standardized data. But we can pull some of that other data from the senior clubs on their manual reports.
Thank you for validating that comment. I appreciate the clarity in your comments. Again, my focus has been Oklon since probably 2016, okay? It's been five years since that motion in 2018. It's been five years. I can go back a couple of years before that. So I have been talking about this now for seven years, maybe eight. The difference for Oklon is $22,000. And believe me, and I've said this before, and I don't think it's a threat, Andre Cisco is a great person and Oklon, it's not fair to Oklon, when their mill levy is $8,000 per mill, to dump this responsibility on the Oklon Improvement District and the taxpayers of Oklon, who generally, most of them don't use the senior programs or senior services. There's a lot of people who do. A lot of them, maybe the majority of them, are not from Oklon. They're Sedgwick County citizens, but they're not from Oklon. So I'm asking for $22,000. Seventh year in a row. So yeah, I'm passionate. I don't know what else to do here. I have tried it budget cycle, I've tried every chance I can for year after year after year after year. This opposition continues. I appreciate Commissioner from District Two today. She seems to be supportive of moving forward. We need one more vote. Mr. Chairman, I implore us once again, again, if this doesn't pass today, believe me, come budget cycle, you're going to hear from this again. That's not a threat. I just, that's what I do, apparently. So I, you know, if the motion on the table passes right now, I'll vote for the underlying motion. I'll vote, again, if it passes without my vote today and we go back on my motion and it doesn't pass, I'll still vote for another motion similar to the one we're going to vote on in just a moment here. I'll vote for that. But the conversation's going to continue. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. We have a substitute motion on item R. We also have a second. Let's deal with this first. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
No.
Commissioner Lopez.
I just want to make sure I know what we're voting on because there's been multiple things said here. Can I just have clarification on that, please?
Yes. We're doing the sub, right? First?
No increase.
No increase. So Dennis was first. I don't have a second. Who's second?
Ryan Beatty.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Lopez, Justin Wyler, County Counselor, I'd point out that that motion was to approve all the 18 contracts that are in the agenda as they're in the agenda right now.
Okay. Okay. So I have Commissioner Meitzner. Let me start over again on that. Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
No.
Commissioner Lopez.
No.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay. That motion carries. So there will be another motion coming, I'd imagine. Commissioner Howell?
No, that's wrong. That's it, we're done.
So that's the baseline. We're not going to, you guys, there's no conversation about the incremental here.
That was my motion that you just got rid of.
Yep.
There was a substitute motion for item R, to approve the baseline.
To approve the baseline.
Just to approve the baseline.
May I, Chairman?
Please.
If there's an interest for me making a motion again, to reconsider these again after we cast item R, I'd be glad to do that again. My base motion was to approve all 18 with these amendments, okay? We're in the same place. Hopefully, we're clear. What just passed was a motion to approve the 18 without the increase. And that passed. A vote of three to two. So we're moving on to the next item, I think. If you want to, you need to make that motion again because you'd like to vote for the increase, I'd love to hear that. I would be glad to make that motion.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
No, I don't want another vote. What I do want is the manager to establish a staff meeting here in the near future when all five commissioners are available so that we can review this issue. Thank you.
Point of reference.
Please. Commissioner Meitzner.
I would think that this would be an off-agenda item, right? This isn't on the agenda.
I think it's just finalizing up the discussion of the ongoing agenda item. But I mean, if it would go further, I think, and I'm not hearing that necessarily at this point.
Okay. All right. We are going to staff this, correct? Okay. Please staff this. All right, Madam Clerk, next item.
Legislative issues.
We are not going to have legislative issues today. Any committee reports?
Thank you.
Commissioners, any committee reports?
I will, I just report that I had a successful trip into Washington DC last week. Commissioner Lopez joined me for some meetings with FRA, Federal Rail Administration, and with Amtrak, and with, we were able to meet with Senator Marshall, and we met with Senator Moran, and we were able to present the two items that we're pushing through for, see if there can be special congressional funding. Who knows? Fortunately, we were in the right, we were there in the right time, because Senator Moran's staff cut off any requests as of last Friday, so we got under the gun by about three days, two days, anyway. But it was very, very successful, and at another time, we'll know, we'll know more about the FRA and Amtrak stuff here within the next 30 days, and so we can invite KDOT to update us if it be of interest to the commission, so thank you.
Very good. Any other committee reports? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, next item.
Other.
Anything under other? I see none. Madam Clerk, next item.
Executive session.
We do have an executive session today. Commissioner Lopez.
I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 30 minutes until 1:05 for consultation with legal counsel for the county regarding matters deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship in order to discuss legal claims against Sedgwick County, and that the Board of County Commissioners return to this room from executive session at 1:05.
Okay, I'll second that motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, we'll be back here shortly. Okay, we'll be back here shortly.